Happy Day, welcome. Buenos dias. The Committee on Health, Tourism, and Start Preservation, Land, and Justice now called to order. Today's Wednesday, December 2, 2020. The time is about 1:04 PM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, November 24th, and again on Monday, November 30th, 2020. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, November 24th, and again on Friday, November 27th, 2020. This Zoom meeting is hosted by the Guam Legislature's MIS staff and my committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. The host will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for the record. We have five agenda items. The first is a confirmation hearing on the appointment of Angela Therese Sontas to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission for a term length of three years, from April 11, 2020 to April 10, 2023. And then we have four bills, beginning with Bill Number 406, sponsored by Regina Bisco Lee and Therese M. Turlahi. It's an act to add a new Section 75108A to Chapter 75 of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to making any Chamor Land Trust Commission lease subject to complete defeasance for illegal dumping and to further directing the CLTC to adopt rules and regulations to implement the terms of this act. Bill Number 407, introduced by Regina Bisco Lee, an act to add a new Section 75108C3 to Chapter 75 of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the Chamor Land Trust Commission to obtain a utility verification from the Guam Water Works Authority and the Guam Power Authority for any residential or agricultural lot it plans to lease prior to executing any such deed. Bill Number 291-35COR, introduced by Senators Clinton E. Rigel and Sabina Flores Perez, an act to transfer administrative jurisdiction of Lot Number 507 Conservation Reserve, consisting of 5,509,664 square meters in the municipalities of Inarahan, Telephofo, Marisu, and Umatic, from the government of Guam to the Department of Agriculture for the purpose of developing the Guam Forest System Plan. Bill Number 292COR, introduced by Senators Clinton E. Rigel and Sabina Flores Perez, an act to transfer administrative jurisdiction of Lot Number 526 New, consisting of 1,555,754 square meters in the municipality of Marisu, from the government of Guam to the Department of Agriculture for the purpose of developing the Guam Forest System Plan. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with my vice chair, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Regina Bisco Lee, Senator Clinton Rigel, and our minority leader, Senator Telotaitukui. Thank you, colleagues, for being here today. So we will begin today with the appointment of Angela Therese Sontas to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission for a term length of three years, from April 11, 2020 to April 10, 2023. I'm going to, before we hear from the panel, provide just a short background on the history and mission of the Chamor Land Trust, their duties. So the late Senator Paul Bredalia was the author of the Chamor Land Trust Act. The Chamor Land Trust was passed 45 years ago in 1975. It was passed unanimously by the 12 Guam Legislature. After passage, it was not implemented until Ina Shantamoro, under the leadership of Idefuntu Senator Angel Sontas, Idefuntu Mangalahi Ed Benaventi, Jill Benaventi, and many others, led an education and advocacy campaign urging the governor at that time to implement the trust. The governor refused to implement the trust, and the suit was filed by attorneys Mike Phillips and myself and attorney, now Judge, Mike Bredalia. This was a pro bono lawsuit without fees on behalf of Onget Sontas and the Noksham Chamor to compel implementation of the act. The AG at that time had argued that the trust was unconstitutional. A hearing on the lawsuit was held while hundreds led a protest and camped out on the grounds of added. A decision was made in 1992 by then-Judge Benjamin Cruz that the law was valid and ordered the governor to implement the act and appoint the first commissioners. Several years later, in 1995, when Angel Sontas was a senator, he introduced the rules and regulations for the trust, which were slightly different than what the commissioners had originally written and controversial at the time. Again, he led hundreds in appearing before the legislature to urge lawmakers to adopt the rules, which they eventually did. With a few amendments over the years, the rules continue today. Advocates were accepted beginning after passage of the rules in 1995, and thousands remain on the list since that time, waiting for land to be surveyed, assigned, or for infrastructure to be extended to make the lots habitable. The Chamor Land Trust Commission is responsible for the disposition of Chamor homelands pursuant to mandates to advance the social, cultural, and economic development and well-being of the Chamor people by way of residential, agricultural, and commercial land distribution and economic assistance programs. It is the commission's mission to carry on any activities necessary to inform and assist in obtaining maximum utilization of lands, including development of lands for their highest and best use in all phases of residential and agricultural leasing. We will first hear from those signed up, and then we will hear from the nominee herself. So we ask that you keep your testimony to no more than five minutes to ensure timely progression. There are actually quite a few people who have submitted testimony. We'll hear first from our chairperson of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, Mr. John Rages.
Hi, Happy Day. Buenos dias, Happy Day, everybody. Senators and established colleagues and those who are here in support of Ms. Sontas's appointment. I'm the new chairperson for the Chamor Land Trust Commission. Also, very, this is my first term with the commission. I also want to thank senators for that confirmation. I'm here just to provide support for our new appointee. There's a lot of work to do, and I'm excited that the governor has appointed you, given you know that you are former Senator Idefuntu Onget Sontas's sister, and as well, your mom had served on the board as well for years. So I'm going to keep it sweet, short, and simple. I support the nominee, and God willing, that you are confirmed, and we will have, we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chairperson Rages. We'll now hear from Pamela Cruz. Pamela Cruz. All right, we'll hear from Pika Farren.
Hi, Happy Day. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm here to provide testimony because I strongly support the nomination of Ms. Angela Therese Sontas to the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and I urge the 35th Guam Legislature to confirm her appointment. To me, Angela Sontas embodies the heart and legacy of the Chamor Land Trust. She is the youngest sister of Onget Sontas, one of our island's preeminent activists who worked tirelessly to ensure the Chamor Land Trust was implemented and the unjust land takings from our island's families were rectified. She is also the daughter of Tanamanda Sontas, who only recently stepped down from the commission after 10 years of service. I have had the absolute privilege of serving with Tanamanda Sontas on the Chamor Land Trust Commission for the last four years. On the commission, Tanamanda served with an unwavering focus towards helping our fellow islanders who have suffered from the federal government's land takings and our people's disposition of land to make a home or farm, and then the compound failures of the Chamor Land Trust to return a majority of those same families to land, even after 25 years of waiting. Tanamanda's knowledge and understanding of the history of our island's families was unmatched on the commission, and she was often our ears on the ground, having a vast network of friends and family who would share their experiences with trying to work with the Chamor Land Trust. Tanamanda, as Angela's mother, has passed all of this on to her. I believe that the confirmation of Angela Sontas gives the beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust the confidence and relief that the voice and legacy of activism by the Sontas family remains constant on the commission. In addition to the legacy that she will continue, Angela herself is an activist for our island's families, our Chamor culture, language, and environment. The first time I met Angela was on a hike at La Texan several years ago. She was there to guide families like mine on the walk into Ihalem Tano to see the caves, fresh water, and ancient laddie sites where our ancestors lived millennia ago. From that first meeting, she has become signee to me and my children, helping us with our Finot Tumoru and connecting us to our roots. Angela also brings with her the knowledge and experience she has gained working on staff for Senator Clinton Rigel, and a renewed commitment and fresh eyes to tackle and solve the many challenges the trust faces. She does not pretend to know anything, to know everything or have all the answers. Rather, Angela listens and learns and is open to fully understand the issue and various viewpoints before she draws any conclusions. Angela will seek help and guidance from others when needed, and I know, knowing her and her mother, that Angela will not be afraid to speak up or stand her ground when she knows what is right. She knows what's at stake with the Chamor Land Trust program and will do everything she can to ensure the commission acts exclusively in the interest of the Land Trust beneficiaries. At this moment in the Chamor Land Trust history, I urge the 35th Guam Legislature to confirm Angela Therese Sontas's appointment to the Chamor Land Trust Commission so her work may begin to fully realize the true potential of the Chamor Land Trust program. Sido Smasi for your time and consideration.
Sido Smasi, Ms. Farren. And I want to recognize the presence of Senator Mary Camacho Torres as well. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. So next, we will hear from Shannon Seguenza. Shannon, there you are.
Okay, Buenos dias, Happy Day. Thank you, everybody. And Therese, and all of the speakers, senators, and everyone here that's in support of Angela. I'm a little emotional from Pika's testimony, so if it carries on, please don't mind me. But I am in, I am here speaking in support of Angela's nomination as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. It's easy to read that in her own, in her credentials, her professional credentials, her community credentials, they're absolutely commendable from the Western mindset for, that form the government entity that we function under, to the need for writing letters and having to give testimony. She's absolutely well-qualified for this position. Her professional experience in the community, working for Senator Clinton Rigel, she's absolutely able to fulfill her duties from that standpoint. But I also want to talk about and focus on my experiences with Angela as an educator and as a community organizer. Since my own self-actualization in 2014, I've had the pleasure of working with Angela on a number of educational presentations. I've seen her at almost every public hearing I've ever gone to. She's at every public forum, all community pocket meetings. And greater than all of those things, she is absolutely one of the most rooted people that I've ever met in my life. Her intimate knowledge of our collective truth is a value that is not countable. It's absolutely completely valuable to this commission. And her genuine love for the island, the legacy that she embodies as a true warrior of our land and our people are going to be her most powerful contributions. And I do urge this body to, to confirm her nomination. And I thank you again for the opportunity to speak. And Angela, I wish you luck and hope that your nomination is granted. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Seguenza. We'll now hear from Dante Natongo. Don?
Buenos dias, Happy Day. My name is Dawn, and I've known Angela since our high school years. And she, as we grew, her passion for the Chamor culture has grown too. She, Angela is one of the most trustworthy person I know. She works hard, she strives for what she believes in. And by having her be a member of the Chamor Land Trust, I know that she can do the job, and she's 100% there for the people and not for just herself. I'm going to keep it short, and I love her, love her to death, and I know she'll do the job 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Natongo. We'll now hear from Rand Kaufman, Mr. John Rand Kaufman. I can't hear you, Rand, can't hear you. Unmute. Rand, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, unmute, I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you go.
There we go. Okay, I thought you guys were muting me. Anyway, way back, you know, working with the Chamor Nation, Angel, Johnny Cake, Pogge, all these guys, and seeing, you know, the impact, you know, and the revelation of what it all comes down to. And what it comes down to, myself personally, is the word "masakata." And "masakata" in Chamor means brave woman. If you think about with the Spanish, 60,000 to 90,000 Chamors died. There was 3,000 left in Agania, and it was the masakata who said to the folks, "Speak Chamor to your children, speak Chamor to your children. Otherwise, we'd be all habla español." And to me, Angela is, is a masakata, in the true sense of the word, that she has taken her life in following, of course, her, her, her mother, the masakata, of all masakatas, the matriarch, that having that ability to communicate, having that ability of trustworthy, having that ability to really be the true masakata, speak Chamor to your children, embrace the Chamor culture, embrace the indigenous aspect of what the whole Marianas represents. And, you know, Angela, bless her heart, in the aspect of trustworthiness, she shares my house, she is, is, is part of our family, and it's something that only through her efforts and what she's been able to do, working for Senator Rigel, what she's been able to do, working with the LEED Shelter, the different aspects of where she stepped forward into this community. She's truly the masakata, and I really highly recommend her for this position. And thank you for the time. This is wonderful. And don't forget the word "masakata," ladies, because all you girls are masakatas, okay? Us boys, we're in the wind. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony today. We'll now hear from Bobby Tynatongo.
Happy Days and Buenos. Guam si Barbara Tynatongo Bigler, Masua Pagus and Bigler. I family locu tal tal malasu, no samasagazu pagu giza i singtsung zotnya. I shantamoro zogi telephofu gida telephofu elementario. Then pafanagizog kontorogi dosna gomahu i gima ani tini tal tal tano. Then ani tini famalau ni tano i baila zani kuttura na banda. Was malagazu na ba hu songan toru estisa. And I hu aten toru, toru ili chakto gwinii uli na, you know, hula gwiniman, you know, masa, masa importante hamzukini guahulu. That, that's me. But before I begin, I just want to say thank you again for allowing me to be here today. I'm gonna, I want to make this short and simple, like what the other Tynatongo, my other Tynatongo relative said earlier. But what I'm going to say, definitely, sis, and everybody else here, senators, and everybody that's among here, I want to make sure that what I say impacts and it acknowledges my testimony on the appointment of, of course, my tellu, Angela. I have to say "tellu" because we've come, we've gone a long way. My testimony today will be a little out of the ordinary, but I am confident that she has asked me to be here for this very reason, because I'm the out-of-the-ordinary one. Love is the highest frequency. Mastakilo igwiniza kini toru. Love is the highest. And you can guarantee that a lot of us here today would not be here if we didn't love what we are doing. Or there is a love greater than what we can understand. What brings us all here? Family, the love of our island, our people i taotogwinii man taototano. It's our love that drives us, like it drives Angela. Hago tellu. Love makes us move mountains. And I believe Angela being in the environment and living and breathing through that environment which she has grown up in. Okay? Living in that environment is where this commission and how it had been established, through the legacy, of course, and continues to live, not only in her, but in her family, as what most of you stated earlier, gi famelanya, where she was able to witness that greater, greater love. I can sit here and talk story about who I am to her and her family, but hago tellu, but she needs no introduction, as I know she will carry out her duties in the Tumoru Land Trust Board with commitment, pride, pride tellu. And, one moment. And the loudest frequency of all, the loudest winiza love. Sido Smasi tellu. Thank you very much.
Sido Smasi. Bobby. We will now, I would like to recognize the presence of Senator Will Castro. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. So we will now hear from Mr. Robert Celestio.
Buenos dias, Happy Day. How's everybody today? I, I want to speak and support Angela Sontas to be a part of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. I really got to know her through Angel Sontas, the, the late Angel Sontas and her mom, Tanamanda. And over the years, I've always was impressed with her, her smile and her happiness, and every time, her joyful spirit. But most importantly, I, I really truly believe she'll be an asset with the complexities that the Chamor Land Trust is going to go through for these past years. I am a recipient of Chamor Land Trust, and, and I am hopeful that in the future, they will continue to work for the Chamor people, and not only for people, but those who qualify for the Chamor Land Trust. We talk about love and, and respect, and, and that's very important. I really believe, I believe that what the history that, that what you've gone through, Mike Phillips, Senator Therese, and all the others, the Chamor Nation, that through the power of oh my God, have seen the atrocities over the many years, not only Spanish, Japanese, but, you know, this, this is, this is an amazing turnaround for our people, that we can now have and, and support our families for those who be recipients of the Chamor Land Trust that, that no other place can, can have. And, and I want to tell you that every day I am thankful to God when I look at my place, my, the ranch that has been given to me, that not only for me and my wife, but I believe that Angela and the board can even do a better job coming up in the near future, because a lot of people today, especially with COVID, have been affected, and they truly need the support of the Chamor Land Trust to be given these properties. And, and it will help a lot of people on the island. And, and with her love for the people and her experiences and watching how the late Senator Angel Sontas had to fight for this, and, and also her mom supporting the, what the Chamor Land Trust was all about. I'm thankful, and, and I really believe, really believe that the Lord has a hand on, on the people that's going to be moving the Chamor Land Trust forward. And, and I really love the wonderful testimonies that, that each and every one of you have given. I mean, it, it, it really shows that the family here on Guam are, are still connected. So I want to congratulate you on your nomination, and I hope the 35th Guam Legislature confirms you. It's a beautiful day. And dunkulinas sido smaspramsu toru agadesi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Celestio. Attorney Mike Phillips?
Buenos, Madam Chair, and all senators and witnesses, and of course, Angela and family. I'm very happy to also support the nomination of Angela to that very, very important position. I'm moved by the high-powered people and the numbers that Angela's had speak on her behalf. It reminds me of one time, by luck, actually did a whole bunch of extra work on a random sentencing, just a traditional hearing. And just this week, before I spoke, said, "Mr. Phillips, are we going to hear the same old thing today?" And I was actually kind of glad that I had decided to add a different thing here and there, and it's kind of a new form. And today, I, I can say, I've watched nowhere near as many as the senators have, but I've watched a lot of confirmation hearings. And, and, and I think Angela, if she doesn't know, she should, that the testimony that's been provided is amazing. I mean, it, quite frankly, it, it makes her out to be Onget Sontas, and, and that is a, that is a powerful compliment. I do want to say that, while I unconditionally support the, the nomination, I think that what a lot of, almost every witness has mentioned is, one way or another, Madam Chair, it's going to take courage and a lot of work. And if Angel were here, I, I think he'd be the first to say that, because people may think, "Oh, it ended when he won in court." And, and you know it didn't. And they may think, "Oh, it ended when, when the governor gave in," and no. And it ended when, when he finally got the rules passed, which, which were not easy, and the answer is no. And there's, there's always a, an excuse, because there's always an interest when you're dealing with property of that magnitude. I don't know if there's anything on Guam more valuable than, than that piece, that, that, the trust collectively, you know, lands that, that were all taken from, from the Chamor people, a portion of them, there's interest. And so Angela, I don't think we'll be surprised to, to find, similar maybe to, to Pika, that when you get in, it's a whole different animal. And you will have phone calls made to you by extremely influential people. You'll have interests out there, very, very powerful people. The history of the Chamor Land Trust Act is, is real simple. Every time there's a turn and there's something positive and it looks good, somebody out of some, from somewhere unexpected comes in, because now it's profitable. Now there's a lot of money to be made. And so people that you've never seen involved, who've appeared to have no interest, will have an interest. The, in my opinion, the most significant event that occurred after the election of a new governor in, in '94 involved Angela's brother. And while it was kept low intentionally, Angel, quite frankly, uncovered a, a meeting that was taking place between the newly-elected governor and the late Larry Hillblum. And there was a plan that was crafted at the Cliff Hotel that, that Angel revealed to the public. And if it weren't for Angel making that very hard decision, and he knew when he did that, that he was, one, involuntarily taking on the governor of Guam, he didn't sign up for that, and, number two, fighting the, the richest person in the Marianas. And I was sitting with him when he made that decision, and, and others. He talked and, and, and made a very conscious decision that I have to do this. And because of what Angel did, I believe the, the trust remains intact. Angel won't get any Angel won't get any credit for that because that's just like Pika, one step along the way. And while the hallmark, hallmarks may be the case, the occupation, the, the landmark legislation that, that all the senators supported, Senator uh um Terlei. In actuality, it's a lot of those um other uh events that without them, we won't be here today. And so I believe for all the reasons that the, the witnesses uh I think share, the confidence in Angela that well, if you're going to pick someone that's not going to be hoodwinked, somebody that's not going to be fooled by, oh my God, why don't we do it this way? Just get rid of the property, it'll be so nice. Just give in when somebody sues the, the land trust. No. You, you need people that uh, that quite frankly, when they say, well, if you don't do this, we're going to sue, just that, that's the life of the trust. I mean, that's the way it's been. And most importantly, there are no further impediments. Now, now the land really needs to get to the people. And, and while there's been a, a lot distributed, um, I've made no secret of the fact I was uh, uh extremely disappointed that uh uh Pika was not asked to continue because if there was one person that I thought could take care of this and, and really make it right, it was Pika. Well, you know, she's not there and, and the board is. And so now it's their responsibility. But it's not the same board from some, from 1975 till today. It's, it's now a different commission. There's no more excuses. That land has to get out. And you know, the whole idea that uh, that uh you may or may not um uh have money or you may or may not have uh uh surveys and all that, 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 that cannot be an impediment. Uh, quite frankly, as they say, you know, you, you've got to be kidding. We've got to get past that stuff real quick and have the distribution take place. And I believe that, that Angela uh feels that in her heart. And I have that confidence in her, as I did her brother, her mother, her father, her siblings and, and uh, and, and everybody that she's been associated with actually and, and just about every witness that's appeared today. So thank you very much. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, but otherwise I give my full support.
Thank you, Attorney Phillips. We'll now hear from Pamela Cruz. Pamela.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm pulling over.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, I'm so sorry. I'm trying to multitask.
No problem, you see.
Hi.
Hi.
So first of all, thank you. I am deeply honored and heartfelt to even be a part of this. I'm going to probably be very emotional, so I'm going to try and keep it short. Um, I've known Angela, we've met in kindergarten. Went to different schools, met up again in sixth grade and it's crazy how we met because we almost fought. So this is all personal to me and why I'm here for Aunt. You guys all know her in so many different levels. Um, I've seen her in her worst, I've seen her at her best, I've seen her um in dark places, I've seen her in all, all colors. But to be here today and to actually hear that she was appointed means a lot because it's something that that she is so closely connected to and so driven to be a part of. And not only is she driven, the love and the the respect she has for, for everything around us, our island, our people, she's like the best person I know that could support and, and fight and she's all of it. She's an awesome person inside and out. And to explain it even baldly, she's a really close, um, she's not even close friend anymore, she's our family. And for as long as we've known her sixth grade, we nearly, we, we had a, almost fought. Actually, we almost didn't fight. It was a friend of hers. And she was the reason why we didn't fight. So even at that start, to know that she got out there to see the difference between two people to bring us together, it was the start of a very, very long um and meaningful friendship and relationship. You fast forward, fast forward to today, my grandmother knows who she is. My aunties, my uncles, she's the godmother of not only my children, two children actually. They're right here too. We're back here. Say hi Nina, hi everybody. Welcome to the people of the leaders of Guam, say hi. And even my cousins. My cousins have her as godmothers, as a godmother of their children. So you already know that she's a really, she plays a really big part in our family. So the choice you guys made is really she's a, she's, she's going to do awesome. She will do awesome. She's not going to let you down. Um, I know she could do the work. She could even do more. She always goes above and beyond. And to even learn and keep learning is what makes her one of the best choices you guys meet. I, I don't want to go anymore. I'm going to keep crying and I want to keep crying. So I'm going to stop now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Please be safe and uh we appreciate your testimony today. And uh this nomination was made by, by e mega hagen Guam and uh we are here to either confirm or deny this appointment and uh so just yeah, want to give the credit. Yes, uh, all right. And so now uh speaking of women with courage, uh, uh former Senator Hope Cristobal.
Sijus maasi. Hello.
Yes, please, Buenas, we can hear you.
Okay, sijus maasi, Senator Thorese Terlei, chairperson and members of the Committee on Health, Tourism, uh Historical Preservation, Land and Justice, uh 35th Guam Legislature. Guahu si Hope E. Cristobal, I'm a former member of this august body. I am here to support Governor Lou Young Guerrero's nomination of Angela Thorese Santos as a commissioner of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. I have known Angela for many years now. And I can, I feel I can attest to her underlying values of honesty, integrity, kindness and sincerity as a friend. Involved early on with the activism and advocacy of indigenous rights and our core values through the actions of her older brother and her mom. Uh, her older brother Senator Angel Santos, Angela grew and built on deeply embraced lessons of loyalty and love for our people and our core values such as respetu, fa taautau, minagim, zen tumautautano. She knows what that feels like. She loves and is devoted to do the right thing for our people who have long endured many injustices under a US colonial system that continues to deny our indigenous human rights with 21st century negative consequences. The continual control of indigenous lands for military purposes. Uh, the laws of our lands uh that impedes our return to maintain our sustainability on island. And the erosion of our indigeneity as Chamoros, the decline of our culture and our language. And I have stood next to Angela with protest signs. So I know her will and dedication. I know her intellect to discern between policy that would add value to the original purposes and principles by which Senator Paul Berdalio dreamt the Tomorrowland Trust Act to, could be to our indigenous people in our homeland living as a, really as a militarized community and policy that can be detrimental to its original purposes. No matter what the situation is, no matter the administration, no matter the political sway. It is a sad commentary that the Tomorrowland Trust will continue to be a target for opportunists and carpetbaggers. It is not immune from great influence by any group outside or inside of the government. There will be interests and influence exerted that will not be in the best interest of our people, our Tomorrow people. We need uh people with an ear, um, an investigative and watchful eyes. Uh, because big boys and special prevailing interests are out there wanting a hand in making some big money out of the trust assets. We saw in the last three years, the work that was, that needed to undo the dirty politics that attempted to erode the integrity of the principles by which Senator Berdalio, his successor senators, Ben Panglin and Angel Santos and a whole line of trust advocates such as Attorney Mike Phillips, who himself was there with Angel to put together the implementation rules and Chairwoman Pika Feheran, who worked tirelessly to do the right thing to protect the trust for its intended purpose. Para i taautau. Today with the new definition iterated by Senator Therese Terlei, thank you, Senator. Big heartfelt thank you. I have gone to the trust meetings. I testified against the road Route 3 being built on Tomorrowland Trust land. Uh, so I do what I can to help protect the trust and its assets. And I really applaud the testimonies of Commissioner Arlene Berdalio, um, Pika Feheran, our Tomorrowland Trust Administrator, uh Director Hattik, uh AG James Cantle and Attorney Phillips for their long haul strong support of Madam Chair's Bill 419-35. Angela Santos understands the trust's restorative qualities and policy that are meant to give strength and a sense of control of our own land so that our people can begin on the road to thrive, to try and thrive despite our colonial existence and injustices of land takings by the federal government. It was enacted before Angela was born to protect and ensure that our homelands go to our people, not any special interest. This is the bottom line purpose. And I highly encourage all commissioners, Angela, you included, to perform your duty and your responsibility with courage and to please stand up for the people of Guam who have waited patiently to be restored as taautautano Guahan. Some say, defund the police. I say, fund trust commission. And let's get on with the work of rectifying past injustices. Sijus maasi, Senator Thorese, and members of the committee for this opportunity to come before you to provide testimony um to please confirm Ms. Angela Thorese Santos as a commissioner for the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. Sijus maasi.
Sijus maasi, Senator Hope Cristobal. Thank you for being here today. For the record, I'd like to uh just read out the names of those who submitted written testimony because they are, it's quite a list. Uh, beginning with Tanamanda LG Santos, longtime commissioner of the Tomorrowland Trust. Mayor Jun Blas, Andy Arceo, Bernice Mc Gill, Francis Valaris, Kelly Matononya, Reila Ferrara, Lenani Naholoa, Sophia Underwood, Barbara Beneventi, Brandon Scott Santos, Jacob Perez, April Sablon, Sheena Hernandez, Jonathan Guerrero, Joseph A. Leon Guerrero, Gisela Chakravarti McDaniel, Joseph J. Leon Guerrero, Pamela Cruz, Michelle Crasostimo, Desiree Leon Guerrero, Alexandra Isa Kengakere, Kai Marie Perez, Zita Pangilinen, Shannon Seguenza, Gregory Robert Rosario, Dr. Francine Nappati, Hila Anson Nicholas, Pika Farin, Kevin Manley, Samuel Ilaskwa, Julian Uggan, Alyssa Eclavea. I'm sure that while we were on the Zoom, they have been more submitted because we've been receiving them all day long. But uh, all right. So I want to thank everyone for their testimony today and to those who submitted in writing. You can continue to submit testimony uh till the end of today, please. Um, all right. So we're going to begin now with uh, uh hearing, or we're going to continue now with hearing from uh the nominee herself, Ms. Santos, you may, you may proceed.
First of all, signo maasi, put toru i jani bunitam, bunitan mizu ni gyalam i kura shon mizu dan i espirtan mizu. Uh, this means so much to me that you guys were able to join me on this Zoom call. I really do appreciate it. And you know, every time I meet somebody, I just want to say that it's not just a, hey, hello. It's a, how are you doing? Who's your mom? Who's your dad? You know, that's a more way because then you guys, you can connect. And it's about connecting, right? Please forgive me, I'm a bit nervous because uh just because I'm nervous. All right. Tardes, honorable Chairwoman Terlei and honorable senators of the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Justice, and senators of janam ju, hamzutoro namen gaigiguini. Malaguna baiun naidunkulunagadecamentu, zan sijus maasi, karay magahagen Guam, jani segundu magallahi. Put inina opportunidad, na baiu sisti taautau, it taautau ta, jani chamo, uh Tomorrowland Trust. One moment, please. That was a lot of heartfelt testimony and man, it takes one to know one with all that love. So. Gau, si Angela Thorese Leon Guerrero Santos, signo maasi, naun naidzu inina opportunidad para baiu kentusi amzu, puti joko appointment, hao lungi komishoni na ngokuntano Chamoros. I'm the youngest of nine children, born to the and Amanda Leon Guerrero Santos, familiar in the With this appointment comes great duty. I'm very conscious of that. I may be a little too conscious to the point that I worry I may not be able to do this because I might disappoint my ancestors. Then I think about my ancestors, how their blood runs through my veins. This ancestry of ours is known for strength and perseverance. When faced with adversity, we do not tuck, tell and run away. We face the issue at hand and by the will, by the will of their spirits, as long as you come with genuine intentions, you're going to be okay. They will guide you. There were great warriors before us, the one to Senator Paul Berdalio, ina shon Chamoros, the one to Benaventi Joe, Benaventi Peter, Nadira, Debbie Knatter, Nevis Materni, Doris Santos, Jan Furkaw, the one to Tonangit Beluk and Ramanda Santos, Offing, Paga, Matengan, Ta, uh Taguata, David and the one to Lydia Sablon, Annie and Tom Cabera, just to name a few. And it's a Lu, the one to Senator Angit Santos, who led the way for the passing of the law and the implementation of the law to restore justice to our people. The pro bono work that Attorneys Mike Phillips, Mike Berdalio and yourself, honorable Chairwoman Terlei, provided for this land restorative program. Former Senator Hope Cristobal, former Congressman Robert Underwood and Robert Celestio, who fought for the return of excess lands and continue to fight for our right to have clean water within our lands. Our Chamoros ancestors who farmed the land long ago, before anyone discovered them. My grandfather, whose land was taken away and declared eminent domain in Mopfo because the island was originally meant to be a military base after World War II. Our ancestors who walked to Menengun, who were massacred in the Tati and were blown up in the caves. But Chamoros warriors who gathered with Magallahi Hurra to rise up together. They led the way for our generation of warriors. I wholeheartedly believe that this is the only way we can move forward, together. The deeper the roots, the stronger we are. They led the way for our generation to emerge. They planted the seed in us. Through the stellar leadership of former Chair, Chairperson Pika Farin. Pika waisauta. Through the stellar leadership of former Chairperson Pika Farin, the prior commission did everything they could to uphold and preserve the trust for its beneficiaries. My Nana was a member of the Komishon and I want to carry on her work with the beneficiaries. A lot of it really is roots work, giving your time. They work towards the restoration of trust in the Tomorrowland Trust. I want to hold, uphold every single syllable in that word. Just one syllable. There's only one way and that is forward movement. Let's get our people feeling proud of where they come from because when you have a solid foundation, when your roots truly feel settled and secure, the tenexa is madness. That tree is going to produce the sustentia we need to prosper as a people of the land. I know the task at hand and the tasks ahead of me are tremendous. I'll have to admit, this was a seed that was planted over a year ago. Back then, I was not sure at all if this was what my calling was. Time passed and I'm here now. I have to acknowledge that I'm a community liaison working with Senator Rijal. I say with because this is my first time working for the government of Guam and the senator does not treat me as an employee. He respects me as an individual. He saw that my heart's work is with the people and gave me an opportunity. And for that, I thank you so much, Senator Rijal. My celu. Within this time, I had been speaking with him and our Chief of Staff, Selena Naderasales, about putting in an application to become a member on the Komishon. They had shared their belief in me that I did not have in myself. Along the way, with my work, I learned and I gained experience in this branch of government, government that would grow to bring me to another level in my life. I attained the necessary knowledge. I started to feel better about submitting, submitting my application. The beautiful human beings who provided support for me today, whom I surround myself with, are a testament of our strength in belief. I believe wholeheartedly that everything happens for a reason. That when you have a pot full of beautiful seeds to help you grow, the process is not at all intimidating because you're not the only one in the pot. This is not one human being's effort because it took the people to rally support behind the Funto Senator Paul Berdalio. Inashon gathered and camped out on the lawn of Atalup for months, sacrificing their time and energy. Countless hours spent awake for the movement forward in returning the land to our people that was taken away from their ancestors. Not only will we be restoring justice, but we will also be making progress in a long battle. Finally providing our people land in which to grow and lay their roots, to hutsa their lati foundation. I am one person and it would be of the greatest honor to be a part of this momentous time in our history. A time when we get to really push the forward, the program forward, full speed with no more interruptions. The prior Komishon had the spirits of their ancestors with them when they settled a lawsuit, not through the courts, but through an agreement that does not take away from the reason behind its conception. I am grateful and humbled to be able to contribute my time to our people. This in the present is what we leave behind, what we will be leaving behind for our future generations to prosper in. The sustainability of a people starts with the land. Conserving all the natural resources of our island for its people, protecting the air we breathe. This is my life's calling. To be a public servant to the people of our Gatu Isla, Guam. I will work to keep the trust in the Tsumoro Land Trust. To be able to thrive as a people of the land. Na lotla. To make alive. This word resonates deep within me. It's a fundamental state of mind in which always prosper. I believe that this is the way we live every day. Now what we make alive within that time is clearing the path for the movement forward. Whichever way you choose to go, as long as the movement is forward, we will get there. I see a Guam rich in pride because our people went back to the land to grow, provide and live to keep alive our roots. I look forward with, I look forward to working with the integrity filled individuals who currently sit on the Komishon. And it would be of great honor and humble love if this body would confirm my appointment to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. To put in my time and energy into the one thing that my brother died fighting for. Returning the land to our people. I will do this work with the humbleness of gratitude with our ancestors' spirits guiding me. Because I am a descendant of the native inhabitants of Guam and our land is our life. Guau si Angela Santos. Signa Maasi. Signa Maasi. Signa Maasi.
Signa Maasi, Angela. Congratulations again on your nomination and, and thank you for being willing to serve in this capacity.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open, you know, for my colleagues now to ask questions. I'm going to begin with one uh out of my one hundred, no kidding. Uh, yeah, so before um not too long ago, the Tomorrowland Trust Commission adopted Resolution Number twenty twenty dash zero two. It was a declaration of the principles on the Tomorrowland Trust Commission relative to its authority and responsibilities to the Tomorrowland Trust. It was drafted and presented to the Commission uh and it declares seventeen principles which have been informed by its enabling legislation and lessons learned through its first forty-five years of existence. There's nothing in there that conflicts with law, of course, but uh it just kind of homes in on some of the issues that they've been facing over all these years, trying to perfect and not have anybody have to go backwards. I just want to know, have you had an opportunity to read that and do you agree with those principles proffered at that time to uphold them as, and do you agree to uphold those as a commissioner?
I wholeheartedly agree with it. As a matter of fact, when Pika had uh wrote these, these amendments, these um principles, I told her, thank you so much. Um, you are, you were guided by our spirits and I still believe she is. She's not done with her work yet in the government of Guam and for our people. So uh, I do wholeheartedly believe in the seventeen principles and I will uphold them, sixteen, sixteen principles and I will uphold them.
Alright, I'm gonna open it now for my colleagues. I'll ask you a couple more questions if they don't ask these. So I'll, I'll open it now for my vice chair, Senator Sabina Perez. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Hafadeh Angela, it's been a long time since I first met you and you know, what a change, what, what, what a changes has come with you. And you know, the words I hear from you is calling. And that's really deep. I think that really is so deep. And um, you know, for someone to uphold the values of the Tomorrowland Trust land, I, you know, I think this is just amazing um that you've come to this position, you know, after all these years. And um yeah, I think this is what we need. We need somebody who can stand strong um to, to ensure that that uh we're going to return the lands to the people. And you know, I hear that wholeheartedly from you. And we, we need this, we need this and we need you to stand strong. Um, because like um many of the people that testified here today, there is going to be strong, strong interest, right? Special interest. And it's going to take not only strength, but wisdom. You know, wisdom to know what is special interest? Especially when you are bombarded by many people. So um, you know, I think, you know, like you said, your, your roots run deep. And I think that's important to always stay connected to those roots. Um, you know, in times of when you're questioning things. And um, so I just want to thank you. And I'm really proud of you to see, you know, what has happened, you know, all these years since I've known you. Um, you know, the growth that has, has occurred and um that you, you found your calling. I think that's so important um for, for people um to, to find their calling in life. You know, there's a lot of things that can, good that can come out of that. And um yeah, we're here to support you. And um yeah, please don't hesitate if you have any questions.
I won't. Sudus Masi.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Regina Bisco Lee, you're recognized.
Sudus Masi, Madam Chair and Hafadeh colleagues and all of those participating in today's hearing. I just, I first want to really thank the Governor and Lieutenant Governor for this nomination and and just express a heartfelt and donkulu nasudus Masi to Angela for accepting this call to service. She's already serving our community in, in a different capacity, but accepting this call is, is a whole nother can of worms. And so um, I definitely want to also say sudus Masi to the members of our community who have lent their voices to this um proceedings today and, and all of those, the long list of those who've submitted testimony that the Chairwoman has read off, uh, was very impressive and it's no surprise to me that they would feel compelled. Um, all of those of you who know Angela or privileged enough to know her, uh you know, the kind of impact that she leaves with people. Um, and so, you know, I, I really agree with what the former Chair uh Pika Fehren mentioned in that Angela embodies the heart and the legacy of the Tsumoro Land Trust. That really um was very powerful and I think that her professional um experience, her community experience, and again, just this tremendous impact that she's had on our island, on our students, on the people that she comes into contact with. I think those are going to really help um bolster her service and all of the difficult decisions that she's going to have to make alongside the other members of the Tsumoro Land Trust. So Madam Chair, I don't have any questions for her at this time, but I do look forward to supporting her nomination and, and voting in favor of Angela on the Tsumoro Land Trust. And again, um chalu sudus Masi, thank you so much for accepting the nomination and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Minority Leader, Senator Titigui.
Of course, Angela, I would be here. Of course, without doubt, you know I'd be here. Uh, Madam Chair, you know, I, I I've known Angela for quite some time. It's very funny too, because I have to tell you a story. Uh, we were both running as senators uh in two thousand six. Right, two thousand six and uh both newbies. And I met Angela and um it was so easy to talk to her. It was, it was amazing, you know, and here a Republican and a Democrat getting together. So the first thing I want to say is that I know that Angela will work with everybody. No matter who you are, what nationality you are, what, you know, uh, what party you are affiliated. I know she will work with everybody. So that's first and foremost. And even throughout the years, I've, I've recognized that. And I actually ended up going to her fundraiser. It's funny, don't tell anybody because I'm a Republican and here I am at your fundraiser and hanging out at a content mall. And uh she even took time out to speak with me about her initiatives and her, and her ideas. But one of the things that really struck out about her was her love for our island and our culture and the people who we are and keeping that alive. You know, through language, uh, through co, uh, customs, you know, everything. So there is no doubt in my mind that uh she is a right fit for this position when it comes to, you know, keeping things sacred. Like she says, she always mentions sacred, you know? Um, there's a lot of work Angela involved at the Tsumoro Land Trust. Uh, Pika makes it look easy. She really does, but it's not. She's amazing woman, you know, Pika's amazing woman. So you know, she makes it look easy, but this position is not an easy one at all whatsoever. But I, I'm, I know that uh the good thing is that you wanted to wait a little bit longer for, before taking on this position. And that uh goes to show how um you want to give that commitment, full commitment. You weren't ready a while ago, but now you're ready. And thank you, you know, thank you so much for, for stepping up to the plate, Angela. Um you, you're gonna do well. My door is always open. So if there's anything else I could do to help uh in your endeavor and and to make the Tsumoro Land Trust Commission of an outstanding commission, uh, then let me know. And, and my love to your family, uh, your mom and everyone there, uh and another thing is I, I met Angela's mother, you know, uh, down the line who's, she was part of helping build that Gilbaza Road down Zero Road uh along with me. So I think you have everything it takes, the background you need and the family support to do this job. So of course, your friends that are here today in your support. I, I, I saw you crying earlier. I'm like, I don't, I don't know how she's holding back those tears and then I saw it and I'm like, okay. But God bless you. Thank you so much.
Masi, I'll go up to Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, I, I failed to mention a couple more who had submitted written testimony, including Renati Uggan, Nolan Flores and Jesse Santos Itzelu. Alright, so we have now hear from Senator Clint Rijal, Senator Rijal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have no questions uh for the nominee because I already asked the one question that I wanted to know. Angela um reached out to me a while ago and, and asked, you know, just I guess out of respect, what my thoughts are on her being appointed and what I thought. And I had one question. My question to her was, is this what you really want to do? Are you sure this is what you really want to do? Her answer was, without hesitation, yes. And I could hear it in her voice that this was in her heart. With that, I said, you have my full support. And so I really have nothing else to add to this other than I fully support you, Angela, and I know you'll do good.
Signa Masi, Senator. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Rijal. Senator Mary Torres. Senator Mary Torres. We'll move to Senator Will Castro.
Sudus Masi, Senator Enthelahi. Uh, Hutatsu, Tumotiguo, Podestino, Kennedotu, Paray Komishon. Utungue na Toddung, Jan Guit, Toddungigunajanya, Paray Imanyamuru, Kitanomami. Hagasa Estino, Tseluhu, Gi Fionasi, Tselunya Lohi, Si Difuntun Ongit. Uh, Metgud, Jan Toddung, Hi Henegenyapari, Man, Manyamuru, Lokui, Kilis, Jonu, Si Angela. Thank you, Madam Chair. I stand in full support of this candidate's appointment and confirmation to the Tsumor Land Trust Commission. Uh, I think it's, it's apparent here, it's evident based on the testimony. Uh, but I personally know and professionally know that her love and knowledge of the land and our people is, is strong and deep. Uh, she's been at the side of a fellow warrior, uh, her, her brother, uh, Mai Puri, the former chief and Senator, uh, the late Senator Difuntun Onget Santos. Uh, and so she has my unqualified support. I also want to say that she's truly a, a person of the land. I want to thank you, Prima, for accepting the nomination and for continuing to find legacy that the familia has started through public service and in perpetuation of our Tsumo language and culture. Um, your parents' service and your brothers and yours uh is, is truly a blessing to all of us in the Mariana. So sudus Masi, Puridjoko Appointment, uh, who support Putayalai, Prima. Thank you.
Signas Masi, Celu. I just want to say that Will Castro is uh my second cousin. And if my great grandparents had married, my last name would have been Castro. So that's we, he's my sec, he's my blood. That's my brother.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Just checking one more time, Senator Torres, she was having some internet issues earlier. Senator Torres? Alright, okay, so I'm gonna ask a couple more questions, Ange, if uh it's okay with you. Um so the trust holds some very valuable properties uh as talked about earlier in, in its inventory, including Oka Point submerged lands, uh property that is very valuable for its limestone or quarrying purposes. And several commercial leases have already been uh proposed to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, including the lease of submerged land for telecommunications cables. The lease of property for mineral extraction. I just want to know, do you have any affiliations of any of these companies or individuals in these companies that will impede your ability to impartially negotiate the best value for the beneficiaries?
Um, I do want to say that there is a property over at Ipau Point and I, I mean, I think it's also known as Oka Point, but it, it, on a map, it's Ipau Point. Um, I have been affiliated with Ina Dahini Lee Natlat Kultur and Tsumoro Inc. And they are the overseers of that Tsumoro Cultural Center. Um, I am a carver. That is not unknown. Everybody knows that. I'm a carver. That's where I started my, uh, I actually started my roots in carving with uh Jill Beneventi in Manila and then we moved up to the Cultural Center. Uh, that I know that I will recuse myself if I need to in that, with that uh parcel of land. Um, or not that parcel of land, but with that nonprofit, because I am affiliated with them. Um, I will recuse myself if there's any- I will recuse myself if there's any, with the others who want to go underground and dig up coral and just destroy our land, I'm not about that, but I don't know anybody else in that field. And but I mean, if there's any conflict of interest that I feel that will arise if I sit into it, I will pull myself back undoubtedly.
Alright. Current law provides that commercial leases, even those for the Chamor Land Trusts that exceed five years require the consent of the legislature. Do you support removal of the legislative oversight as to long-term commercial leases?
No ma'am, I do not support that. It's a check and balance and I believe that we need the legislature in there to make sure that everything is going swell.
The trust has exclusive oversight of the hiring and supervision of its administrator, notwithstanding the appointment by the Governor of the current administrator. Are you willing to carry out the duties of the Commissioner to hire and supervise the administrator independent of political interference?
Of course.
I want to thank you again for being candid with us and I really appreciated your statement to the panel of your intentions for this trust and we wish you the best. It's, you know, we were saddened at the end of Tenamanda's term on this commission. So we were all proud beneficiaries of her advocacy, her hard work, as well as the work of your brother, of course. And we all want the same thing, we want, you know, to be able to fight for and protect the rights of our people to live and thrive on land despite, you know, land takings, despite those injustices that had occurred. And I'm offering all of our services as individual senators, my committee, for your work there and to assist the Commission as it moves forward. It's a huge responsibility, as you said, it is, I agree. And I know you will bring your enormous heart, your undeniable courage and the core values to the table for every meeting and the issues that present itself to the trust. The most essential duty is to safeguard its mission, to protect the trust from being raided for the benefit of special interests that do not serve the needs of those beneficiaries. To carry these programs, the perpetuity of homelands for future generations and to continue to move towards better management so that we truly remedy the long-term injustice of those massive land takings. I have faith that you are going to perform these duties well and again, I congratulate you on your appointment. Honored to have shared this hearing for you and for all those who have brought so much love and support for you based on many, many things and your long history with them. I think that really is a great attribute that they recognize. Alright, and so there being no further testimony, we are going to call this hearing for the nomination of Angela Teres Santos. Do you have been duly heard?
Sanamasi Toros Anzu.
Agumah, thank you very much. It is 2:18 PM. Thank you very much Angela. Alright, so we're gonna now move on to the second item on our agenda, which is a hearing on Bill Number 406-35 and I will ask the sponsor, Senator Regina Scolli, to introduce the bill.
Sutusmaasi, Madam Chair, and I thank you for co-sponsoring this measure and for advancing these two measures that will help to further protect our northern Guam lands aquifer, or NGLA. Bill Number 406-35 COR will ensure that all CLTC lots are consistently inspected for waste that can leach hazardous chemicals like abandoned vehicles, car batteries and appliances into our aquifer. The ultimate goal is to have these properties assessed at least twice a year because providing regular attention prevents dump sites from growing too large and perhaps can ensure the removal of these dangers to our aquifer before contamination occurs. And I also want to acknowledge the good work of the CLTC under the leadership of Director Jack Hattig and our CLTC board members to include our former Chairperson Pika Farin, who's joining our proceedings today. Since the Dengue fever outbreak, I believe last year, the land trust has stepped up its efforts to clear any solid waste from its inventory, given the connection between trash like old tires and mosquito-borne diseases. And it's a good motivation to give the CLTC a sustainable way to accomplish this statutory mandate. Bill 406 can increase capacity and revenue at the agency since the measure grants the land trust the ability to potentially create fees for commercial and/or residential lessies. But this funding source is optional and the measure will still allow for a budgetary increase to finance either in-house or contracted inspections. And I want to thank my co-sponsor of this measure, Chairwoman Therese Terlahi, who has oversight over our land agencies for suggesting this change to further support the CLTC's efforts to sustain this new program. Keeping our land trust properties free from illegal dumping will have a direct benefit to our aquifer and a direct benefit to our island, especially considering the amount of these government lots within the area. I look forward to any feedback from our community on this proposed measure and again, I thank you Madam Chair and the committee for hearing this bill today. Sutusmaasi.
Thank you Senator Lee. We will now hear from, alright, so the Chairman of the Chamor Land Trust was here, but had to excuse himself because of our extended proceedings and he will submit testimony in writing. We will now hear from Mr. Glenn Snickless, who is the Solid Waste Management Supervisor at the Guam Environmental Protection Agency.
What is in half a day, my name is Glenn Snickless, I'm the Solid Waste Program Manager for Guam EPA. On behalf of my Administrator Walter Leon Guerrero, I'll be reading Guam EPA's position on Bill 6046-35. Guam EPA is in support of Bill 406-35. We support the enforcement and compliance of all environmental laws for the protection of human health and the environment. CLTC field inspectors work closely with Guam EPA and other public health agencies to address illegal dumping on CLTC property. We should continue this relationship with or without this bill, but commend any and all efforts to maintain a healthy Guam. Comments to the bill include adding the creation of junk yards. Since a lot of the CLTC properties are plagued with junk vehicles that are not registered, no longer running, kept for parts or for sale. This situation has increased the likelihood of contamination on our lands. Protecting human health and the environment is everybody's business. Don't lose Sutusmaasi.
Thank you Mrs. Snickless. We'll now hear from Attorney Mike Phillips on Bill 406.
Thank you Madam Chair, I support the general intent. I think anytime you're gonna protect our groundwater, you know, it's hard to argue with such intent. In fact, I don't really think most people on Guam know how close we are to a very, very dangerous situation. And I think if they did know, they would be much more reserved about military expansion and about unplanned development, you call it development, it's more growth, but it's very concerning. So in general, I support this, my concern is this, Chair and Senators, and that is isolating Chamor homelands. You know, I'm from Santa Rita and you cannot tell the difference between your lot and a Chamor Land Trust lot and you shouldn't be able to. I don't understand why the owner of the, and for purposes of my testimony, I'll refer to the occupant of the Chamor Land Trust property as the owner, because there's really no difference. They will utilize that property for their entire life and so will the owner, who has fee simple title next door, won't take the land with him. He may own it in writing, but he will just occupy it or use it or benefit from it for his or her entire life. So it's really the same thing. Why would result in the absolute harshest penalty, which is the loss of the land for the person that is a member of or utilizing Chamor properties? And yet, the person that owns the property doesn't seem to have the same consequence. The second thing is, it really would be comical if you had EPA, and I applaud the work that they're doing, going from one land trust lot to another, skip the private sector lot, go to the land trust lot, skip the lot owned by Smith, skip the lot owned by Jones, because they're not subject to this kind of, you know, very, very good, but very thorough inspection. And then every time you come across a Chamor lot, you say, this is the one that we, you know, we really check. No, we've got a water lens that does not distinguish between Chamor Land Trust property and other property. And I think if you're going to put a requirement in like this, then put it over the entire lens. The lot on the right and the lot on the left, irrespective of ownership, run the same risk if somebody's dumping on those lots of polluting our, damaging our water. And so I just ask respectfully that the same treatment be provided across the board equally, regardless of the source of the property and the reason the person might be on it or why it might be in that person's name or whatever, just treat everybody the same. But I applaud moving in this direction, I just think that it seems a little awkward that it would single out the Chamor Land Trust. Secondly, Madam Chair, and I'll make this quick because I watch the debates and I think the senators, number one, know the issue very well, and number two, probably have their opinions. But I just think that every time you come to an agency and then you say, hey, we're gonna add another responsibility. It's like, one, well, does that agency have enough to do already? Because if the police are gonna start being responsible for the work of DPW and EPA and all that, it doesn't make sense. Let GPD do what they do best, let the Chamor Land Trust do what they do best. They're not in the business of looking for toxins and protecting our water. They care as much as anybody, but that's not their business. Their business is to get that land into the hands of the beneficiaries, that's their job. EPA's job is in part, and I'm not saying exclusive, obviously there's shared responsibility, but they're an example of an agency that really should be doing this. And that's the way things go in Guam. The hospital operates separate from the port, the port operates separate from this department and that department. We've even divided the fire department and the police department because we figured, you know, their functions and responsibilities are different and they're better off doing what they do best. And so that's what I suggest here, the same thing is, don't dump this on, no pun intended, don't dump this on the Chamor Land Trust, they say they don't even have enough money to do surveys. And you question whether or not they should even be in the survey business when we have land management, but apparently they are. And so now we're gonna add another responsibility that, again, you know, don't get me wrong, I have the utmost respect for the members of the board, but coming with the qualifications that they do and the staff, who again, have serious qualifications to do certain things and now adding this responsibility on, even if they're going to be utilizing or kind of sharing the work with EPA, to me, it just doesn't make sense and it goes against the history of what we've been doing with our departments. And I don't think it's cost-saving, I don't think it'll accomplish what is intended, although I do applaud the effort and I hope everybody understands. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much Attorney Phillips. We'll now hear from Gina Campos.
Good afternoon Senators. Thank you for allowing me to participate regarding this particular bill. I share your feelings that Mike Phillips just expressed and that's why I wanted to take some time out of my work to talk about this. Number one, I know a lot of people that live in Chamor Land Trust properties and I know their situation. And you have another bill coming up that expresses some of the hardships that they're going through. And when I read that there might, could be a fine or a penalty that could be implemented in this law, it concerned me. A lot of these families can't even afford the $30 a month so that they could apply for trash pickup. So although I understand the intent and I agree that something needs to be done, I'm concerned about the ways that you're going about with this particular bill, so that's one thing. I just can't, I can't see the idea of implementing a fine. The other thing is, to ask a Chamor Land Trust to go out a couple of times a year to inspect these properties, I don't see the need for that. You have a current law that enables your mayors to basically police areas that are polluted. They're already tasked with that. They've actually been, in some cases, I believe some of the mayors have already been issued citation papers that they can issue to landowners. So, you know, so the mayors, and the mayors know exactly where to go. They know which areas they should be targeting. They're more familiar with these areas within their district than I think that somewhere, somebody at Chamor Land Trust. Chamor Land Trust has a lot of work on their plate right now and I would like to see them continue that effort and not have to worry about going out and policing something that the mayor's office has been tasked to do and EPA is tasked to do. And I think if the mayor's office and EPA were to work collectively, there's already fines in place, there's already laws in place that address all of this. And I just, you know, I was concerned about that and more particularly that there could be a fine in place. The reason a lot of these families are dumping on their property is, I mean, some of it is just mind-blowing, but one of the reasons is they legitimately can't afford to pay Guam solid waste to come and pick up the trash. A $30 bill a month to them is a lot of money. It's their water bill in some cases and they just can't afford to do it. And so maybe that needs to be addressed and I agree. If you're gonna do that for some landowners, you need to do that for every landowner. We have individual property owners in so many areas. I drive by and I've called the mayor's office myself to say, why is this being allowed? You go up to Gigo on the back road and you see abandoned vehicles scattered all over the place and that's not being picked up and we already have funding for that. We collect monies already for abandoned vehicles and that's not being implemented. So I'm encouraging the people at the legislature to look at enforcing the laws that are already in the books, encouraging the mayors and EPA to perhaps include this, if you want to go with this policy, to include this as part of their regiment and not penalize anybody in Chamor Land Trust properties. My heart already goes out to them, I think they have enough issues to worry about and this would not be one of them that I want them to sweat over right now.
Thank you very much Ms. Campos for your testimony today. We'll now hear from Mr. Robert Celestio.
How are they? I wanted just to give my opinion on 407-35, but now that I hear on 406-35, I really agree with Mike Phillips and Ms. Campos because I live on two acres of Chamor Land Trust and I have to pay $35 plus an extra for two bins. It is quite expensive for us and I look at my neighbors and they don't have any bins. And I wonder every day, where do they throw their trash? And so by implementing this, now we're gonna adopt rules and regulations where the dumping of illegal dumping on Chamor Land Trust, correct. Go ahead and implement it for everybody, the private lots, the Chamor Land Trust. However, I do disagree if you're gonna give any fines because a lot of people can't even afford food right now. Now you're gonna find them and then if you adopt certain rules that you're gonna take the property away, that doesn't help the people. And so I really feel that it means well. We need to protect our aquifers, I really do believe that because there's so many contaminants that have gone into our water lenses. However, by isolating just for Chamor Land Trust and Bill to make and adopt rules, if you're gonna do it, then do it in a way where Do to make and adopt rules, if you're gonna do it, then do it in a way where uh. Individuals or families are not pressured uh when when an inspector comes out to their place. And then it could be seen as harassment. Because this is our domain. If I go to your house and I said, okay, I want to inspect your house. I mean, uh you would feel, believe it or not, you might feel offended. And so I'm just uh uh I feel that it can be abused. That those in Tremor Land Trust who are gonna uh enforce the laws and rules can abuse it. Uh to those families uh that they might not like, uh they 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 probably have uh. Animosities to them, and and I'm just speaking from my opinion that it can happen. And so that's what I'm afraid of, you know, somebody coming into my property and say, okay, we have an inspection, these are the rules and regulations. Uh I want to go through all that and 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 then they're looking for something that's not there. And 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 then I I I'll probably say, okay, I understand the rules and regulations, you're gonna come in. But then I'll feel sort of offended if they do it uh uh personally, like like uh. Like they don't inspect the next guy net down the road or the other person down the road, and I feel like I'm isolated on that issue. So on on this bill, I think uh Ms. Campos and 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 Mike Phillips is right, it is spot on that. Uh it has to be uh considering us, the the leases. And 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 not just isolated just for for certain issues. Uh Guam EPA, uh you know, I respect you guys, you have your work cut out for you. There's so many dumpings on the island. Uh I don't know what the 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 solution is, but I I feel personally uh. That this would be a problem in the future. If if you adopt these rules and regulations, especially with fines. And uh and and I don't feel comfortable with with the wording of of this bill. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Celestial. I will now uh questions. I, okay, so we received written testimony also uh on the bill from Pika Farin. And now we will hear questions from the panel, beginning with the sponsor Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't necessarily have um any questions for the panel, but I do want to thank everybody for their testimony and their feedback. Um thank you very much, Glenn, and um to the director and everybody at uh EPA for all of the work that you that you do. I know it's a. It's an uphill battle, to say the least, um to address illegal dumping, not just on CLTC property and all all the inventory, but. Across our island, so I really want to thank you for um all of the work that you do. Um in terms of what Attorney Phillips and I believe Ms. Campus and Mr. Celestial were mentioning. Um I just wanted to note that the bill was proposed to grant the same responsibilities as any private lessees. Who can potentially face termination of their lease by landowners for illegal dumping. Um but the measure allows for the CLTC to to decide the appropriate action. Which can potentially include fines, but we're not top discussing fines today. That would be something that the CLTC could um address later down the line. Um and those fines would would help to recoup the cleanup costs, the disposal fees, all of the different um costs that would be incurred. So termination of the lease is not the mandated punishment. This again has to go through. Um a kind of a triple A process for potential fines, if that's what uh CLTC decides. But the bill also gives a pathway to improve CLTC's monitoring um efforts of its in- inventory. So it can uh prevent legal dumping on the vacant lots, because now we're authorizing more inspectors. To be hired or potentially contracted um if in-house professional expertise is an issue, as was raised. Um but I think we need to just keep in mind that illegal dumping is a huge problem on this island. It's massive. And our goal is really a multi-pronged approach or multi-pronged solution to address this massive problem. And so clearly, there are laws and processes in place, but those aren't working. We still see, as was mentioned, all of this illegal dumping. Uh abandoned vehicles, tires left on the side of the road, and so as frustrating as it is for for us as senators, we get calls about this all the time. But the mayors are all also have having to deal with these issues, and it's just. You know, yes, we be, there are laws in place, but they're clearly not working. So I agree that we need to enforce the laws on the books, but we should also consider expanding those to see what else we can do to tackle this problem. And I think that the idea of turning a CLTC lot into a potentially undevelopable parcel. Because of the presence of hazardous waste, it means that we didn't fulfill the mission of the Tremor Land Trust. And I take that very, that responsibility really seriously, as I'm sure that many of the CLTC board members do and the chairwoman does. Um so our real goal here is to tackle illegal dumping and to protect the aquifer. Um that is eighty percent of our of our water source here on the island. So again, I I really appreciate the feedback. There's certainly. Uh amendments to this bill that I think can strengthen it. Um and again, Madam Chair, I I appreciate the opportunity to ask questions and and to give my feedback to some of the testimony that was shared.
Thank you, Senator. All right, and I had a intended to ask the CLTC, you know, what uh is their current. They have standard operating procedures already, which say if you violate any of the terms of their lease or, you know, their rules, that uh. They they have penalties, and uh I just, I wanted to ask them if they had ever. Considered dumping to be a violation and whether they had ever instituted penalties on that. I also sent them in advance of the hearing. Questions as to that in specific. To Swamp Road, which we know they did a cleanup along Swamp Road together with EPA because of the dengue fever. And I saw, I wanted to know, especially in that example, how they had implemented such um. Uh you know, restrictions, I guess, and um. I al- also, so I wanted to also ask them how often uh inspections occur. Because it, I think it is part of their protocol to do regular inspections of the property. I know it's in the lease very clearly that they can do inspections. To see whether you are in compliance. And whether they are doing that or not doing that, I really wanted to get on the record, and so I'm hoping we will get answers to that. Unfortunately, they're not available. I. I believe the director was not available for this hearing due to on this. Uh I also wondered if a fee was necessary, and I wanted the CLTC to testify on that, whether. If they are already mandated to do inspections of these properties, whether a fee is even necessary for them to continue to do that work. Um and I know that, you know, in my numerous meetings with them, uh. They need more personnel. I'm very sure that all of them would would agree. They need more personnel to do more inspections, but I do know that they are. Currently authorized and are doing some inspections. I had also reached out to uh the Guam Solid Waste Authority. To ask them if there had been any efforts to negotiate, uh this is after introduction of the bill, because I was I was trying to find a way to. Remove any reference to fees or um uh fee for inspection. And to find, you know, any other solutions to the illegal dumping on the properties. Uh so I reached out to the Guam Solid Waste Authority and asked them if any efforts had been made to negotiate a bulk rate for the solid waste. Pickup for Tremor Land Trust properties or some other arrangement, so that those, as uh Mr. Celestial testified, who are unable to pay for um. Individual trash bins, that that we can have some other solution, because I think that that is very real, that that is the reality of the tenants. And uh so the response from Mr. Gale, who's the chairman of the Solid Waste Authority Board. There are no current Lifeline-type programs available to any current GSWA subscribers. I use the term Lifeline because that is the program used in the telecom industry that subsidizes telecom service to qualified households. Under that federal program, telecom providers are reimbursed by the federal government for the subsidy provided to those households. However, all mayors are allowed to take one truckload, trailer load to the landfill daily, free of charge, as mandated by local law. I believe several mayors use that option to service some of their more needy constituents. And and I also have questions for EPA, and thank you, Mr. Siniklas, for being here and for all your work in this regard. So my my understanding is that some of the properties that have, you know, the biggest issues with illegal dumping are those that are actually not. Leased out. There are the vacant properties, and because there's nobody there to monitor the dumping that is occurring on there. And I know we had talked in the past, I I I can't remember if the it was the prior director or the current director about putting up fences. Around around Tremor Land Trust properties that are vacant, the big tracks, so that we can prevent some of that dumping, especially in the very favorite dumping areas. But of course, cost was a a factor, and I just wanted to find out from you at EPA if uh. Yeah, uh you have any grants or money that might uh. Be able to be used to put some fencing up on those uh properties where dumping often occurs.
Well, actually, Senator, there was a number of years ago, a contractor approached Guam EPA. In regards to uh the GPA power poles that they were getting rid of. It was concrete power poles. And um one of the proposals at that time was to allow the Mayor's Council of Guam. The village mayors to utilize those poles to block off illegal dump sites that lead to nowhere. A lot of the illegal dumping occurs in those areas. Uh we call them utility easements to nowhere. Uh so they use those easements as dumping sites. You know, we have cleanup groups. Uh clean up the area, and then a year later, it's back to normal. Uh Senator. Uh Rigel is, it was instrumental in cleaning one of those utility roads along uh MCS a couple of years back, and that was a lot of. Waste, and just shortly after that was cleaned up, we did a waste characterization study. And we had to clean up the site again, just shortly after they had cleaned it up. So it is a problem islandwide. Uh you know, one of the things that we're toying with, the idea that we've actually uh spoke with Senator Sabina Perez about. Is universal trash service that requires everybody to have trash services. Uh in terms of affordability, that's something that maybe, you know, can be discussed later to uh figure out. Uh those residents who are in need of a sliding scale perhaps, so that it could be more affordable. But even with uh without trash service. Uh and paying thirty dollars a month, you can take your trash to the transfer station, and there's three. There's a Harmon. Uh Harmon uh household uh transfer station. There's the one in Malolo and one in Agate, and that's only seven dollars and fifty cents. You know, seven dollars and fifty cents is very affordable, you know, for the for the metallic, I mean, for the electronic waste. Paint solvents thinners that are problematic around uh our northern aquifer. Those can be brought down to the Harmon transfer station and get uh for free, basically. You don't have to pay anything. So, you know, so it's it's pretty difficult when you go to these sites. Um and you know, I had mentioned that we should also include junkyards. It's not necessarily illegal dumping on CLTC property. It's um people doing side hustles, you know, they're selling parts. Uh from CLTC properties, they're accumulating a whole bunch of junk vehicles that eventually become problematic. Uh so it's it's um, it's something that, you know, is affecting the island as well, and it's both for CLTC properties. And uh the private and public properties that are out there.
Yeah, that I wanted to follow up with you on that uh in regards to um. You know, any type of e- either uh dump sites, or sorry, what did you call it? Junkyards or uh dump sites or illegal dumping. Uh you are fully authorized to enforce laws regardless of whether it's on Tremor Land Trust property, isn't that correct?
Correct, and you know, for the Tremor Land Trust properties, we actually worked even prior to COVID and be- before the dengue. We worked with the Tremor Land Trust uh officers, and you know, we conduct joint inspections and more so. Uh for those uh clients that are problematic, that that basically refuse to comply with. CLTC's warnings on on uh keeping the property clean and and we uh, you know, reminders of their responsibilities. Of being tremoral stewards of the environment. Uh so it's, you know, it, we come in when they can't get it done, and then we work for compliance. And we understand that, you know, based on, you know, their situation and a lot of, a lot of CLTC property owners, they live substandard, below standard. And um, you know, they're they're deciding on what to pay for, you know, whether they pay for power or disposal or medicine or disposable. Well, disposal has always been, you know, um. Not a, not a priority, so hopefully, you know, the introduction of universal trash service might help address. Uh illegal dumping of solid waste. You know, the Mayor's Council of Guam, they have the uh recycling revolving fund program that's going on. For junk vehicles, bulky metallic waste and and waste tires. Uh that, you know, that helps in the removal of those problematic wastes that could, they could benefit from as well.
All right, so yeah, what what you're describing is my understanding from talking with the past chair and other commissioners that uh. If they found a problem uh during one of their inspections or through a complaint on one of their properties, that they would. Go out and inspect and take care of it and give notices, issue letters to these people and ask for compliance. And if they were unable to get compliance for something that is within EPA's authority, that they absolutely refer these to Guam EPA. And I don't see any impediments to Guam EPA going to property regardless of the owners and uh enforcing the laws. So I wanted to find out if any other, um I guess the question here is that uh, you know, what what happens if if they don't? And so.
Right.
Wanted to make, well, the bill is proposing that it be a uh written into the lease and a and a. Potential penalty that the lease is terminated if they are unable to comply, right? That's the ultimate uh penalty, I guess?
Yeah. We can only comment on solid waste or environmental violations. Uh and Tremor Land Trust, you know, being the landowner or the landlord of the property. Uh you know, I think it's it's a part of lease agreements. I've seen lease agreements where, you know, that they're not allowed to to uh basically. Um harm the environment. Uh and these are, these are lease agreements that are written by landlords uh based on past experience. That's why they have a. You know, they have to put a a down payment or some type of payment down and uh prior to exiting, they'll do an inspection. And they'll get their money back if it's clean. If if not, then they keep the money for the cleanup. But you know, i- in terms of, in terms of uh Tremor Land Trust requiring that, uh you know, Guam EPA. You know, we can only enforce uh environmental laws on Guam.
Yeah, that's what I want to ask you about. So your part in this is the enforcement. So when they call you, if, yeah, and you're supposed to enforce, it's your. Law, I mean, your authority to enforce uh those types of laws regarding.
Also, public health gets called in. So there's a number of agencies that enforce solid waste violations uh for.
My question, my question to you is, is there any other non-CLTC property. At risk of losing or in property owner who's uh at risk of losing his uh title to property. What's the maximum penalty that you can impose on them?
You know, the maximum penalty for solid waste violations is up to a thousand dollars per day per violation, and normally in a case like that, there's like three or four violations times. You know, a thousand, up to a thousand dollars per day until it's cleaned up, so it could be a very substantial amount. Uh historically, I've never seen that happen. Uh we've actually worked with a lot of people who can afford cleanups and we, you know, our goal is cleanup. And education and outreach, so they're, so they know how to manage their solid waste. Um but in terms of, in terms of uh violations, those are violations that we we can issue by law. And we can also issue litter citations for illegal dumping and littering that is occurring by somebody else on somebody else's property. Uh and that's up to a thousand dollars. Uh it starts off with two hundred dollars. Uh and then community service, uh up to fifty hours, I believe, uh and.
You don't have the authority to take away anyone's uh title to their property for violation?
No, we don't have that, uh uh you know.
Okay.
We don't have that authority. We just, we just find the individuals for solid waste violations and we work for compliance.
Right, okay, and um do you charge fees for your inspections?
For these inspections, no, we don't. We don't charge us fees, so if, you know, if if we get called for. So if, you know, if, if we get called for a complaint, we have, the way we do complaints, there's only three in the solid waste management program for the whole island of Guam. But the way we do complaints is we put it in the villages and we do three regions, north, central, and south. And then we just grab all the, you know, the complaints for that, that region, and then we go and do inspections. But we don't just do inspections, you know, we have, we have a lot of other, you know, solid waste complaints and investigations. We also have permits for facilities and, and occupancy inspections for development. So we have other job duties that we are mandated to do.
Yeah, I agree. So does the Chamorland Trust employee. So we're just, yeah, trying to find a, right, who's, yeah.
But for, for most emergency response, which Guam EPA sits on, we also, if it's an emergency that is, you know, immediate threat to human health and the environment, and 911 is called, then we all respond to that emergency and, and we set that as a priority. But a lot of the complaints that we're receiving are more public nuisance. So, you know, the, my neighbor's trash is not in the trash bin. It's in bags and the dog got, you know, went through it. Or, you know, my neighbor has these junk cars and then we'll go out and take a look and we advise them, you know, to maintain the area, et cetera.
Okay, great. And you've been able to, for the most part, work this out or penalize them under your existing laws, right?
Yes, we've, we've worked with voluntary compliance, especially for the ones who are living substandard, and we try to help them comply. That's, that's a main thing is to help them to comply to the, the law.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping in the committee that we can remove the language regarding the inspection fee for, you know, to be placed on these residences. And in fact, if they are working well with Guam EPA, that we, we need to allow that relationship to, to, you know, remove any impediment to it, especially since you are the one with the authority to enforce those types of laws.
Yes, but CLTC officers do play a very important role because they're the boots-on-the-ground people. Guam EPA will get complaints and that's what initiates the investigation.
Right. They'll call you when they do their investigation or they receive complaints.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to open it now for Senator Perez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, just a question about the recycling revolving fund. So I know that the, the mayors, through the budget process, received $1.3 million for the Island Mind Cleanup Project. So, you know, I'm wondering, perhaps maybe we can tap into that, that fund to kind of, I guess, fund maybe Chamorland Trust lands. I mean, what is, I know Walter's not here, you know, we haven't had a full discussion on this, but, you know, this is something that would, you know, the, the fund could, you know, support. You know, expanding the use of this fund to, you know, deal with illegal dumping in Chamorland Trust lands. Is this something, do you, you know, I'm thinking that this is, you know, I'm just trying to think of different avenues to address illegal dumping, you know. And, and you were talking earlier, Glenn, that this is something that you're working with Chamorland Trust already. And, you know, what do you see as potential ways to kind of augment what you're doing with, with use of the recycling revolving fund going towards Chamorland Trust lands, Chamorland Trust to help combat or curb illegal dumping? Is this, I think, yeah, to me, I think this is a...
I, I think that, you know, the use of the fund already has been identified on its use for illegal dumping. You know, the fund can't pay for, for trash, but they most likely could be leveraged for the recyclables, you know, the junk vehicles, the bulky metallic waste, the tires, et cetera. And then the different mayors, you know, because they control their portion, they prioritize the use of those funds. So if the mayor of Derido, as an example, decides to work with Chamorland Trust and target CLTC properties that, that meet the definition of the law for its use, then perhaps they can prioritize it that way. But it, you know, the, the fund should not be used for trash disposal. It should be used for recycling. So that's what the Zero Waste Initiative, so.
Yeah, I understand that. I just was wondering, maybe we can put in the verbiage of Chamorland Trust to be one of the recipients of the recycling revolving fund, you know, to, to meet the, you know, the first priority, second priority, that sort of thing. I'm wondering if that's something we can do with this fund to address the problem of, of these, yeah, the waste that we're seeing there.
Yeah, I think that would be an amendment to the law to include them if that was the case. But if, without amending the law, if, you know, if, if the mayors and the CLTC administrator, they, you know, they put their heads together and they identify these problematic locations. You know, the mayors, they have sites that they prioritize, and I suspect that a lot of the sites are the same sites that are on Chamorland Trust's properties anyway. So maybe one year, the fund could be used for this purpose and kind of like rotate it around and hopefully, you know, it could be managed more effectively in the future so that we have a handle on it.
Yes. And I think, yeah, there's definitely a room for other options. So like, you know, I think with every challenge, you know, there's an opportunity, a solution. And, you know, perhaps, you know, this idea of community service, right? If, if a person who violated illegal dumping or did illegal dumping is caught, oftentimes, they don't have the $1,000 and they're, they're given the opportunity for a community service. You know, I think what's important to kind of solve this issue is, you know, looking at the SOPs, developing the SOPs of Chamorland Trust to see if we can build capacity where we have a designated, you know, sort of a volunteer group that is willing to, you know, take on the stewardship role of Chamorland Trust. And that, that not only, you know, I'm not talking not only about trash, but, you know, potentially about, you know, the protecting the green space, protecting our native species as well. So, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, the solution to this, there, there are many ways to, to solve this. And, you know, I, I do hear the concerns as far as, you know, basically making their, their lease null and void, you know, and it's, if it's only being carried out with Chamorland Trust leases and not with the private landowners. Yeah, I think there has to be some sort of fairness involved. But, yeah, I think I'm open to, to finding solutions to this. And I think a lot of it has to do with working with Chamorland Trust to see, you know, how they can develop the SOPs to kind of work towards more of a cultural shift, a change. You know, I'm always for, you know, finding solutions upfront. Enforcement, yes, is important, but, you know, doing things upfront is, is, I think, going to provide a greater impact. But, yeah, so, yeah, that, that's just some of the comments and questions.
Thank you. Senator Titigui.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Hafaday Glenn, thank you for being here and thank you for those who are testifying too as well on, on this, on this bill. There is something that was asked earlier regarding, now I got to find it. Oh, my gosh, I've got like six things open. And it pertained to... My bad. Oh, my goodness, tell her where it's. Because I opened up for Jean. Thank you, Senator Bisco, for that, the SOP on the standard operating procedures for the Chamorland Trust on the application for agriculture. Because what I'm trying to look for right now, and I guess I'll put, here it is, is a testimony that was given from Pika Farin. And it was mentioned that she must point out, in her testimony, she says, "I must point out, however, that all our leases already include a clause that says, in effect, that dumping or other misuse of properties makes the lease null and void." So knowing that already in their, in their agreement, that pretty much covers it. And when she also mentions that, she talks further on about, you know, how the main issue in dumping other property, properties, these main dumping areas are on vacant properties that, you know, nobody's sitting on. And by who knows who is her, her question mark. So, you know, you're going to deal a lot with these dumping areas that nobody's on. So I greatly appreciate everything EPA's been doing. I know you guys have been at this for the longest time. And we're, I guess, you know, we're, we're trying to find other avenues to try and address this issue. But at, at the point, I think, you know, the question would be is, does Chamorland Trust have individuals who monitor, who go out and monitor these properties? And that's the one thing I don't see in, in Pika's testimony, whether there are people that are designated strictly at Chamorland Trust to go out and monitor. Do you know any of this, Madam Chair?
They have people who, you know, do that. They don't do that exclusively. They have multiple tasks to do. And so they will always tell you that they don't have enough people to monitor continuous.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And it's all about enforcement. You know, if we don't have those people there and, and there to enforce these laws that are already implemented within the Chamorland Trust regulations or lease agreement, then it becomes very difficult. So, and, and I, I know that EPA has the same issues as well. I just wanted to, to thank you two for being here, Glenn, and doing all that you're doing out there. Appreciate the continued work that you're doing with Chamorland Trust too as well by answering some of those calls. And I'm sure you, you get some calls too as well from constituents in areas that over, like you mentioned earlier, the story you talked about where somebody on Chamorland Trust, the neighbor next door is not Chamorland Trust recipient or they're, you know, it's just their own property and they, they treat it very, you know, disrespectful to their environment and that you do answer these calls. So thank you for your continued hard work at EPA for that. But other than that, I listened to what Mr. Phillips had to say. Attorney Phillips makes sense, you know, as well as Robert. Appreciate your testimonies and we'll take those in consideration. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Rigel.
Thank you. I have no questions, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Senator Torres.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator. All right. And we'll now invite the sponsor to close. Senator Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again to you and your team for working with a very crowded calendar to hear these two bills today. Bill 406 can ensure a massive inventory of government land which sits right above the northern Guam lens aquifer to ensure that that doesn't add dangerous contaminants that threaten its viability. And this measure gives the CLTC and the governor the flexibility, the flexibility to accomplish this expanded role. They can choose to increase its budget request or create a tiered fee structure that funds most of the subsidy potentially through commercial leases. So our residential lesses won't bear the brunt of this, as was explained, or concerns that were raised earlier. The commission can choose to handle this task in-house or contract a private sector partner to provide this service. And I want to thank Director Haddig and, again, Senator Theresa's team for taking the time to meet with me prior to the introduction of these bills and discuss some of it. And that's when we learned about some of the great work that they had done prior to, or at the start of the Dengue fever outbreak to just ensure the health and safety of our community. The NGLA provides about 80% of our drinking water, 80%. And every effort to protect this natural asset must be made so that we can have access to life-sustaining water today, tomorrow, and in the decades and centuries ahead. And I really want to thank Attorney Phillips for bringing that point up in his testimony. And it is very concerning and, and I feel that, you know, the steps that we make today can help to really protect us in, for future generations. So with that, again, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Sisus Massey.
Thank you. And I hope that we can, you know, enforce protection of the aquifer on all property and not, yeah, select, you know, only just the Chamorland Trust property. But, so we were going to continue to work on, on that because it's everybody's obligation and we have to find solutions. All right. So there being no additional testimony, this committee will consider this bill duly heard. The time is now 3:08 PM. Thank you. We'll move now to the next item on our agenda, which is Bill Number 407, introduced by Senator Regina Bisco-Lee. Senator, if you could read the title and introduce the bill, please.
Sure. I'm sorry, I don't have it up.
Let me read the title, just so it's on the record. "An Act to Add a New Section 75108(c)(3) to Chapter 75 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Requiring the Chamorland Trust Commission To Obtain a Utility Verification From the Guam Waterworks Authority And the Guam Power Authority For Any Residential or Agricultural Lot It Plans to Lease Prior to Executing Any Such Lease." Senator Lee.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, once again, I, I thank you for convening this hearing on a measure that's part of an agenda, a legislative vision that's all about securing our environment and our economy, both today and for generations to come, through protections for the Guam, the northern Guam lens aquifer or NGLA. I'd also like to extend my gratitude to partners like the Guam Waterworks Authority, the Chamorland Trust Commission, Guam EPA, and others for engaging with us to find solutions together. "Bill 407-35 Addresses a Problem That Happened More Often Than It Should." As mentioned in the bill, many lesses of residential and agricultural lots have found themselves in a regrettable situation of finally getting their lease with the Chamorland Trust Commission only to discover after the fact that there is no water or power available on site or even close by. Understandably, many beneficiaries have grown frustrated with this costly surprise and difficult process they now have to undertake to simply have utilities installed. So once again, I want to thank and recognize Director Haddig for now ensuring that the land trust provides advanced notification of available utilities before the leases are approved. But given that this was not always the case in decades prior, putting this consumer protection in law will stop this unfortunate history from ever repeating itself. "Bill 407 Also Calls For the CLTC to Meet With GWA, GPA, DPW, and Department of Land Management At Least Once a Year To Determine Whether Those Properties That the Commission Plans to Lease Are in Sufficient Proximity to Proper Utility Connections" and to just have that conversation. While no leases will be denied solely because utilities are not connected, 99-year-long agreements should only be finalized after fully informing the lesses about this financial cost just as we ask for any private land purchase. And with that, Madam, Madam Chair, I want to thank those who've signed up to testify today in advance for their feedback. And thank you again for hearing this bill. Sisus Massey.
I'll say again, we have a representative from the Chamorland Trust here today, unfortunately. So we will hear now from Evangeline Luhon, Senior Regulatory Analyst at Guam Waterworks.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Senators, and thank you for introducing this bill. GWA appreciates the opportunity to provide comments on Bill 407-35. "In the absence of a comprehensive and coordinated land use and development planning affecting Chamorland Trust properties, GWA supports this bill as it means, as a means for the Chamorland Trust and its lease recipients to make informed decisions on individual leased property development plans prior to executing such lease. For its part, GWA will provide to the Chamorland Trust Commission the most updated information on existing and planned water and wastewater service prior to properties being issued a lease. GWA has had many experiences with individual customers where they were not aware of the lack of water or wastewater services in their area where they intend to build their homes or conduct agricultural activities. Many such CLTC customers are unprepared for the additional costs to bring water or wastewater service to their leased properties and may not follow the building permit process in executing their development where utility review of connections to our systems would occur." where utility review of connections to our systems would occur. GWA also supports the proposed yearly formal opportunity for GWA to communicate to CLTC on existing and planned expansion of the GWA system. We view this as a first step toward coordinating development planning and one that aligns with other intergovernmental infrastructure coordination GWA is currently conducting with the Department of Public Works and with Guam EPA. The proposed meetings will also bring together critical agencies that can help determine priorities for properties to be leased that will minimize the burden to the leaseholders. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to provide testimony on Bill 407-35. Please feel free to contact our general manager, Miguel Bernadette, if you have any questions concerning this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we did, I'm really disappointed that there's no representative from the Chamor Land Trust Commission so that they could also clarify when in our discussions, they showed me provisions in the lease that very clearly specify whether, especially when there is no water or power available, and the lesses have to read that, of course, sign off on it. So they are definitely given, they are informed when they sign their lease. They are also, I am informed by the staff. And there's also provision in Guam law that mandates that all transfers of property include this provision, you know, relative to whether there is water or power available. And I wanted them to be here to talk about their efforts meeting with Guam Waterworks and in planning for the long term to prioritize lots and how to get on these huge tracts of land, which ones they're going to prioritize and how they're going to get infrastructure to those lots or to prioritize the lots where there already exists infrastructure in relatively, you know, nearby. So I'm hoping we'll get, have to seek that in writing, I guess, since they're not available today. We'll continue with testimony from.
May I just add a little clarification or maybe a little information? So what happens is that when you're going through the regular building permit process, you get a thing called a utility verification. And it's a form that says, here's where our lots are in. What this bill will allow us to do is work with the commission itself. So instead of the individual landowners coming in for that utility verification, which is a requirement for building permits, we will do it with the commission itself for all their big tracts of property. It's really to be able to improve the process. We do, we have a limited staff reviewing permits. So we would like to try to do it. So instead of like 10 or 15 people individually coming and really actually providing the same information, we would like to be able to provide it to the commission itself so that this utility, so their individual leases don't necessarily have to come in one by one. So we would establish a better, more efficient way of giving them this utility verification.
Is there any impediment to GWA giving that information right now? It's my understanding that that is done all the time.
We're doing it individually, like for individual landowners. And I think what we're trying to do is.
With the trust, yes, because they have also had to report to me which tracts have infrastructure, which types of infrastructure. So they, I'm sure that they are discussing this. Benj, there you are. Okay, yes. But so is there an impediment to that being done between agencies?
I think that this came about because it's not being done. And I think we want to be able to improve the process. And it gives them, we have a structural, a formal structure that reminds us that this is why we intended to do this. But also then it also brings a better relationship between GWA and the utilities with Chamor Land Trust because we don't necessarily communicate on a regular basis. We communicate with individual leases.
All right. Well, that's not my understanding from the Chamor Land Trust. So, yeah, unfortunately, I wish they were here. All right, so we'll hear from, sorry here, Mr. Celestial.
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Chairwoman, Chairwoman and Senators and Ms. Luhon. This is my opinion. When I had to, when I first got my lease, the Chamor Land Trust gave us documents stating that we had to go to Guam Waterworks and GPA and the building permits after we get our leases. And it was a very, very difficult process for us, for me, to get everything approved with EPA, GWA, and GPA. And so when you get all these lined up and all signed and everything, and then you finally get your building permit, you get your water permit to get in, and then they put power, it's a, it's a long process. So my, my opinion is this, you change it, and now that the verification has to be done from Waterworks and GPA, verification with Chamor Land Trust to see if they're able to put water and power in that property prior to giving the lease, that would prevent that lease from being given. And so that's my opinion is that going backwards is that it's going to delay a lot of leases to be provided to individuals who qualify because then you don't have the verification from the utilities to Chamor Land Trust saying, we can't give this property out because GWA and GPA has not determined that there's an availability of this property, I mean, these, these Waterworks or GPA, and that would prevent leases from given to certain individuals. Now, in the other ways that the process today, yes, it is difficult for individuals, but they do have a lease. And at least they got a lease to try and provide water and power into their places. And it's very difficult, especially if you have to put up like five telephone poles and go 500 yards to put waterwork is very, very expensive. Because I had to do something like that for my water. And so I feel that if you do, if you pass this bill, it's going to delay a lot of leases from being given to individuals that qualify because then your, your verification has to be implemented. And if you tell Chamor Land Trust, oh, we can't implement this lease at this property because there's, there's no water and there's no power going into that place. So that prevents the lease from being provided to an individual. Now, if you can say that, okay, we're going to put water and power into that area, then you could provide the lease. And I think that's what this bill is trying to do, is to ensure that the verification of water and power is available prior to giving a lease. And so I think that that's the opposite of what's happening today, is that first you get the lease, you go and try and get a building permit, you go to GPA, GWA, and they sign off, says, yes, you could put water here, you could put power here. So that's what I was able to do that. It was very difficult. I'm going to tell you, it's very difficult, especially a lot of people can't even afford the money, especially when you say you got to put down $2,000, $5,000, and it's expensive. But grace of God, we were able to do it. So my own feelings and opinion is that if you do it this way with this bill, it's going to delay a lot of leases from being given to those that are qualified. That's just my opinion. And I looked at it, and from my experience, how it went, when I had to get a permit, and then now you have to reverse it, now you have to get verification from GWA, verification from GPA prior to giving a lease, that individual waiting for his lease is not going to get a lease because he can't verify it. And so that's my opinion, and that's what I see. You guys might not see it that way, but that's the way I see it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Celestial. Mr. Attorney Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Senators who are present. I agree with Robert. And we usually agree, we have, we usually talk once a year, but the time I listen to Mr. Celestial, I admire this man so much, and he's always correct. And it's not, I don't think it's inconsistent with the intent. I really, like the other bill, I think the intent is positive. But without getting into too much legalese, I would just suggest this, Madam Chair, that an amendment be made so that it's not a condition precedent, it's a condition subsequent. So Robert gets the lease, and now there's an obligation, and it's not on him. And the point is this, that the government really needs to make a decision. Are you going to act as a landlord and treat these people as if, you know, they have obligations that most private sector owners don't have? In eighth grade, I was selected and fortunate to be part of the student government day. And my counterpart was the deputy director of Gura, Leonard Polino, the owner of the White House. And I drove around with Leonard, and he inspected homes. And he made sure that those Gura homes, that the tenants were complying, and they looked nice. And I think as a kid, I understood the purpose. And I understand it now with those that hold leases to Chamor Land Trust property. I think one of the earlier speakers, you know, was correct about, you know, you're a Chamor leaseholder and you have that obligation. I don't disagree with that. The problem though is who has the power to correct this? The landlord or the tenant? And I suggest two things. One is it's the landlord. If you're going to be a landlord, if you're going to lease apartments, if you're going to lease land, then you need to get the infrastructure there, and you're in the best position to do it. But I respectfully suggest if you want help, then you give 25 people leases to an area, and they'll get you that. And if you tell Robert, you're on your own, and as powerful and influential and as correct as he is, he's not as strong as when you go ahead and give out those leases, and those people now have a vested interest. Otherwise, none of us are going to have leases because it's, you know, it's who's on first, and it doesn't work that way. You give those leases, just like you're able to sell property with the appropriate warnings, then the landowner in the private sector has to decide, gee, how do I, how do I find $10,000 or $20,000 to bring in water? Some of our leaseholders are probably going to be able to build a home for $150,000, $200,000, and they're going to spend 10%, which does not, I defer to Gina Camps here, but I don't think it affects the value of the home at all. The appraised value is not based on whether you have water and power. That's presupposed. So they're spending 10%, 15% of what it costs to build a home, whereas other people that can afford $400,000, $500,000, they're spending the exact same amount of money, a much smaller percentage. And so it's a regressive tax. And I think that one of my last points is this, Madam Chair, that this is actually a new thing for us. Kind of giving away my age, but I'm pre-Chamor Land Trust, I'm post-Organic Act, and I'm also pre-charging fees for every single thing out there. There was a time when you could build a hotel and not have to pay a special fee for water because everybody understood that Waterworks, back then, you know, PUAG, is going to make more money off you than the pipes. And I've been educated by people like Gina Camps and others and many years ago explained to me that the GPA Waterworks still make more money off the homeowner than the connection fee, but they're not going to make either the connection fee or any, you know, tiny profit here or there to operate unless that person has running water. So it's kind of like, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Well, we got to get it going. And so we're going to have a whole bunch of people that if you were to spread that cost of connection, even if you wanted to assign it to that individual when people in the same position didn't pay for this until, historically, until recently, we're going to assign them that cost anyway. It's a land restoration program, which means we're a little bit late, right? And if they had their land, this would not be happening because these leases were not imposed before. You pay for the water that you use, even if it's calculated in. And so here, I would just, as I said, respectfully suggest that it be changed from a condition precedent to a condition subsequent. So the moment someone like Robert or others, and hopefully, you know, and it's anticipated that this is done in tracts, when that's released, then the onus now is on the landlord, which is the government of Guam. There's no more impediments. It's not a racial thing, it's nothing special, it's no different from anything else. You're a landlord, and now you have the obligation to go out and get this done. And there's all kinds of ways to do it. But the one way I suggest you don't do it is by preventing the transaction or putting the onus on the individual because that's not going to work. I can tell you, and with all due respect, because it is political, and I'm definitely not on the top of the ladder here with this group. Many of you out there know much more about politics than I ever will. But I think we all agree that if you have 50 to 100 people that have leases that are already in their hands, and the only thing they're waiting for is water and power that quite frankly, the landlord has not brought in, that pressure may get it done, but it's not going to be done if you just have individuals, one, that don't have leases, that might have one one day if water shows up for some reason. Or number two, they have a lease and they're not part of a bigger collective group of people in the same boat. So again, Madam Chair, I would just simply change it to a condition subsequent. And the intent is great because I think the intent is to make sure people have water and power. And that's what I think the leaseholders also want. It's just that they're in no place to deliver on this. It can be done, it doesn't have to be done for free, but it requires the landlord or the collective group of people that will have some influence in order to get it done. And I think the bill, as written unintentionally, kind of prevents that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So I'll yield to the sponsor for questions for any of these people testifying.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions, but I will save some clarifying comments for the closing. I just wanted to give Ms. Banji Luhon an opportunity if she had any additional feedback that she'd like to share. I just wanted to give her the opportunity to do that now.
I just wanted to say that a utility verification just tells you where the closest infrastructure is located. It doesn't say you get water, it doesn't say you don't get water. It's just a, it just tells you where it's located. And what we want, the intent really was just to say, we're giving you the most direct information of where all of our existing is going to be and where the future is. It's not telling you if you can connect or not connect. It just gives the commission more information as what they've planned to do with their property. And that's all the verification does. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So thank you very much, you know, to all of you who testified, and of course, to Mr. Luhon. If I could just ask you a couple of questions. So I just want to make sure, if it's about notification and making sure that everybody knows existing infrastructure, planned infrastructure, I very much agree that that should be done, that should be done anyways. That is supposed to be what they are doing and what you are doing, I would hope. But I want to find out, there was something I read in the bill that made me believe that maybe this is about illegal hookups. Are you finding a problem of illegal hookups? That's not the issue here, right?
No, not at all.
All right, then. So it's just a matter of lesses who are very unhappy because they do not have infrastructure, and so they're picking it up.
A lot of times, if we meet customers, they come in and they want to know where the utility lines are, and they didn't realize they're so very far away. And so it's just information. And it's really, of course, the current, the current process, like Mr. Celestial has talked about, is that individual person, customer comes in, the individual landowner comes in. What I think we wanted to do is for their larger tracts of land or even their smaller tracts of land, is to be able to provide this information to the commission themselves so that they don't, the individual lessie doesn't have to come in, that they would already have that taken care of. Because as he said, it's a very arduous process to get infrastructure hookup. So this just takes one of those steps off the table. So it also gives the commission more information as to if they're setting a priority for where they would like to issue leases, that they know what the plan is so that a future, future CLTC leasing, lesses know ahead of time, like, well, I don't have my, I don't have my infrastructure today, but three years from now, they're planning to put in a water line here. So it gives them really advanced information. And we're working with them as a collective, as a group so that way they can make their own decisions as to what the priority would be.
All right. So I guess what concerns me now is that what you're describing is exactly what has been described to me by the director. And, you know, when we've asked them, which tracts are next to be leased out? Which ones are priority? Do they have infrastructure or not? And are you prioritizing those with infrastructure? They seem to have been in communication with GWA. So if that's not the case, then of course, something's very wrong, that the two agencies cannot communicate with each other and have all this information available because. because that is their goal. I, it's supposed to be their goal and I know that the, yeah, getting just to have the information that that should not be an issue. They should have it. And I would hope that you would just give it to them, whether they ask for it or not, because then it's off of you and it's on them. And they, when, when they issue these leases, I'm sure.
It's really that form that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's really that form that says you are required to get a utility verification. So it's that piece of paper that says, here's the utility verification that is being given to the commission.
Wait.
It's not just conversation. It's, it's like, it's an actual form that the commission will receive for, for their property.
A form that says you are required to get a verification, not a form that gives them the information of?
There's a form called the utility verification form.
Right. They, they also issue that to, to the lessees, right?
Um, I know that the, the GWA issues it to the individual landlord or lessie.
Right. Okay. So what are you saying? I, I guess you lost me there.
That instead of issuing it individually, we're going to issue it to the commission for all their, so that, let's say there's 10 people in that particular tract. So instead of 10 people coming to us and we're going to give them where they have to apply and fill up the form for this utility verification, we're issuing for, for this particular tract, this, this, this utility verification.
Okay, thank you. So does that, uh, does that negate the, for them to go individually when they want a building permit to go back to GWA? And like Mr. Celestial explained, and get what they need for their building permit?
For the particular, for the utility verification part of it. Certainly for the rest of it, there's other process, other parts of it in the permitting application process, including setting up the commercial, I mean, setting up the customer account. There's a lot of other things, but at least for this particular things, they won't have to do that.
Okay, yeah. But for permitting, they would, they would still have to go back. All right. So then what about, uh, so we, we pointed out that it's already in the leases that the tenants are notified. The tenants are, are notified as well through the standard operating procedures of the trust. And now we want to notify the trust from GWA to notify the trust in bulk of the different tracts. All right. Okay. Senator Perez, questions for the panel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just calling for Vanji regards to mapping out the utility lines. So what is the process as far as, you know, maybe doing an overlay of CLTC properties? I mean, is that a huge effort in regards to just doing an overlay of the utilities and properties?
I believe that our, if we have an updated parcel map for all their parcels, which you know, sometimes, you know, I think, I'm not quite sure the last update of all the parcels on Guam. But if Tomorrowland Trust does have a, the GIS layer for their properties, it's very, if we could get that, it's not difficult. We just overlay it and then print out the particular things. I think the issue is if Tomorrowland Trust has their digital layer because we don't, we don't have their property maps. We have some.
That's, that's good to know that it's a simple process. It's just dependent upon Tomorrowland Trust, whether they have the maps to supply. But this could potentially be done en masse, right?
Well, yeah.
It's supposed to be. Vanji, sorry, Senator, are you saying that, um, sorry, Tomorrowland Trust has access to the GWA maps?
No, no, no. Uh, Tomorrowland, uh, Tomorrowland Trust can get data from us on our lines. But I'm not sure what is the opposite of, I thought she was asking the opposite. Can we put our lines on Tomorrowland Trust's maps? So we don't have all the parcel data. We just have some, you know, we don't, might not have the most recent parcel maps for Tomorrowland Trust, including their subdivisions. We might not have that. We have some, there's a, I don't remember the last parcel there for Tomorrowland Trust that GWA has. But our utility maps are updated very frequently. So if we were to obtain their, they want, we could give it, give them their, give them our infrastructure or it might be easier for them to give it to us and we could work together to create those maps in partnership, right?
Yes.
And then if they have a GIS system, it'll be easier than it's just digital.
Thank you, Vanji. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
All right. Senator Nello?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just for the record, because I, I don't know if you mentioned it earlier. I know we did it on Bill 406, but Bill 407, there was a testimony submitted by the former chair of Tomorrowland Trust. And she made some comments in here again, that I know we don't have the Tomorrowland Trust representative here, but you know, being that she served on the Tomorrowland Trust for several, for four years, it had some comments with regards to this legislation. And I, I just want to read for the record, just a couple paragraphs, if I may? If, if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Please do, because she explains the process very clearly. Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, again, this is from Pika Fehren, a former Tomorrowland Trust commission for four years. And she humbly submits her testimony on the, on Bill 407-35. From my perspective as a former commissioner with deep understanding of the complexities and process that go into issuing out leases and the challenges faced by our leasees, this proposed bill, while well-intended, serves only to slow down the process for issuing leases by requiring more bureaucratic red tape and does not add any information our leasees does not already know when signing their, their leases. The agency's leasing process already has at least two incidents where they communicate the condition of the property and its location in relation to power, water and sewer to the potential lesee. The first incident is when the land agent presents the property to the potential lesee, whether through a tabletop map review or, and/or site visit. One of the primary and consistent questions of every potential lesee is the property's conditions for building a home or farming, which require connections to utilities and access. This is discussed at length with the leasees and is obvious from maps and, maps or at a site visit. It does not require consultation with GWA or GPA. The second incident is that every lesee has a section in it that tells the potential lesee whether or not their property is within 100 feet of public utilities, power, water, sewer. This also is easily determined by our land agents without having to consult with GWA or GPA. To require consultation would only slow down the leasing process, which is already decades behind schedule. The second part of the proposed bill describes what I've been trying to get our agency and our agencies and director to do for the last year and a half to meet with our utility and public works agencies and plan our leasing patterns. Despite my push for the director to make this happen, to my knowledge, it has not happened in any meaningful way. Perhaps requiring it through law for all the agencies would ensure it does get done. However, to make this section more effective, the proposed bill required that the utility agency consider their future projects and work towards a percentage goal of funding focused on installing infrastructure to CLT properties. I believe this bill would be a great step by government Guam to fully assess the CLT program, realize its potential to help the disenfranchised families that have suffered land takings by the US federal government. In conclusion, as concurrently written, I do not support this. As currently written, I do not support this bill. However, I would fully support this bill if the section requiring consultation prior to issuance of the light, of the lease was taken out. In parentheses, the commission shall obtain a verification of availability of utilities or equivalent documentation from the, from GWA and GPA prior to executing any lease from any residential or agricultural lot, unquote. And if the utility agencies were required to fund at a certain level, CLT properties' infrastructure, which would be determined through a lease annual consultation. Thank you for your consideration and I look forward to a strong and more effective bill to fulfill the legislature's goal of helping our island's family. Sincerely, Pika Fehren. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to read her testimony and for the record. I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Senator Rijal? All right, Senator Castro's not here. Senator Torres?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clearly, this bill has a lot to consider. The intentions perhaps are good, but the, the consequences and the practical consequences of it to the Tomorrowland Trust lessees, I think, needs to be further examined. And I, I'm going to reserve any questions. I, I just want to give myself enough time to read the testimony and consider all that was said today. But thank you very much for this public hearing.
Thank you very much, Senator. So Vanji, can I just clarify one more time? So we've heard another testimony on other bills that GWA, of course, has a master plan and that they are extending sewer lines, right, actively? They've got a plan, so much, eight, I don't know, miles per year, right?
Linear per year.
Yeah, linear foot. And then same thing with water, I'm guessing?
Yes, there is a plan for extension of water as well.
All right. And so that's when you.
I'm not quite sure if it's as robust as sewer because I know that sewer, we're so much far ahead in water versus sewer.
That the consent decree, I think, right? But, okay. So yeah, so I, I, I too, I share the sentiment of the Pika that, yeah, if, if we can, you know, merge these plans, these long-term plans for Guam so that we, you know, where the huge, you know, amount of lessees are so that our, our plans can be directed that way. Yeah, I think that, that that would really assist. I, I was, uh, it was explained to me that that was supposed to be what's going on. So I am surprised to hear that you are not actively meeting or, you know, that that's an issue. So yeah, I'm going to follow up with that. But, um, but it is, I think, good planning. Thank you. All right.
I think that that's what we want to be able to do on a regular basis, right? Is be more partners.
Right. And, and there's an impediment right now to you doing that, is there?
Um, I, I'm not sure. I just know that it's not necessarily happening and as included, as reflected in Pika's testimony. I know that, you know, we really want to make sure that moving forward, we're moving together.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So Senator Lee to close on the bill?
This is Masi, Madam Chair. Again, I want to thank you for convening this hearing on these two bills today. And also a huge thank you to our partners, GWA, to the CLTC Director Haddig, for working with us to find these solutions for our people. And we look forward to his testimony. We got a message from the chair of the, the commission that they are working on it and they'll send it in, into the committee. So Bill 407 would ensure that CLTC lessees have all of the information available to make a decision to close on their leases. It provides similar protections given to private land transaction, namely a plain verification of what utilities are available. Without such information, lessees have been saddled with the difficulties of making optimal use of their land and the high costs associated with installing utilities. To clarify some grave and valid concerns expressed today, this bill does not require a CLTC beneficiary to hook their property up to water or power infrastructure in order to get their lease approved. No lessie will be forced to pay this enormous cost upfront. What the bill calls for is just the documentation necessary to make an informed decision. So if you would like to get a lease when the water line is miles away, you absolutely can. And this measure simply mandates the CLTC to inform applicants of this situation before and not after a 99-year agreement is signed. Once again, I want to thank CLTC Director Haddig and the commissioners of the CLTC for already correcting this concern within the agency's standard operating procedures. But I believe that codifying this notification will ensure that these past mistakes are not repeated. And yes, the leadership of public servants like our former chair, Pika Fehren, and Director Haddig have corrected this mistake. But enacting this gold standard into law will enshrine the gold standard these leaders have set for every successive commissioner and director of the CLTC and will benefit, you know, future generations. Because as GWA testified, this unfortunately has already happened to too many of our people. Ms. Vanji Luhana from the utility additionally mentioned today that this bill will result in increased efficiency in our government. It will provide CLTC with advanced information and will help these stakeholders to work together to best serve our people. Instead of the unfair case of lessees giving up on their dreams of developing these properties, Bill 407-35 will help the lessees to truly understand the full potential and the limitations of these properties before they close on their leases. And that's really the intent and the aim of this bill. And so again, Madam Chair, I want to thank you for the opportunity to have this heard. And I look forward to additional discussion on this bill on the floor once it gets reported out to this Masi.
Thank you very much, Senator Lee. Senator Lee, my apologies, but when you described the bill, I'm hearing very different from what Vanji is describing as the bill. So the bill, you know, I'm reading it and it says, "The commission shall obtain verification of availability of utilities prior to executing any lease for any residential or agricultural lot." So it's, um.
So it's an opportunity for all of the stakeholders, for CLTC, for the utilities, to come together and have these more frequent meetings for that, have this information shared. So they're able to provide that information to the lessees before they sign on. And so it, it takes a lot.
Information to the lessees we determine is not really an issue because they, they are being informed. The, the, the issue that she's trying to resolve is she thinks that land trust is not informed and she wants them to be informed by Waterworks or vice versa, or Waterworks to be informed by them. But it, but it is, it does require prior to executing any lease. So, yeah.
It's an opportunity for this information to be shared by, from the utilities to the Tomorrowland Trust and to the lessees. As was testified by Mr. Robert Celestial, it's a very difficult and cumbersome process in his experience and in the experience of many other Tomorrowland Trust folks that we've spoken to. And so again, no leases will be denied solely because utilities aren't connected. These 99-year-long agreements should only be finalized after we fully inform the lessees about the potential costs because of any distance or issues because of, or issues regarding utility connections, just as the same way that we have for private land purchases. I hope that clarifies.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. And so we will now consider this bill duly heard, Bill number 407-35. It is now 3:54 PM. Thank you again to all of you who've testified on this bill for your time today. And you may submit in writing any additional testimony. All right, we'll move to the fourth and fifth agenda items. These are, I'm sorry, we're going to take, let me just clarify. Do we need an MIS? Yes, okay. We're going to take a five-minute break for MIS to reset, please. Five minutes. So it's 3:54, we'll come back at four o'clock. Thank you.